There we go.
Okay. Well, good evening and welcome. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you once again, and welcome to this evening's school committee meeting. We have a number of people that are joining us as we speak, and I want to give them a moment just to to join the broadcast. Since this is a virtual meeting, in keeping with our practices, we'll begin by taking attendance. Ms. Sullivan, please call and roll.
Dr. Coleman?
Present.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, present.
Dr. Rivera? Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Present.
Mr. LaCanto?
Here.
All members are present with the exception of Dr. Rivera.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and Dr. Rivera has let us know that she is traveling this evening and sends her regrets that she won't be able to join us for the meeting this evening. She had a long planned engagement. Also, I wanted to send out some brief condolences to Dr. Rivera and her family. They suffered some loss this week, and our thoughts and prayers are with them. For those of you that are joining us this evening, as you know, this meeting is being shared live on Zoom. It will also be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and YouTube at a later date. It will also be posted to the school committee's webpage for your access at a later date. When you do join us, either now or later, you can find tonight's meeting documents posted on the committee's webpage at bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, all lowercase. And you can find those meeting materials specifically under the August 19 link. Here in Interpretation Services this evening in Spanish, excuse me. Well, Mr. Vinal, good evening. One, please introduce yourself in Espanol.
Sure. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. Good afternoon. My name is Juan Vernal. I am the Spanish interpreter. I will provide live interpretation during the public comment portion of the meeting. For those in need of interpretation, I will now proceed to make the same announcement in Spanish. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Juan Vernal. Soy el intérprete para español. Voy a proveer servicio de interpretación en vivo durante la porción de comentarios públicos de esta reunión para aquellas personas que necesiten del servicio de un intérprete. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. Please proceed.
Thank you once again, Mr. Vinal. Thank you as well to everyone who signed up this evening for public comment. Sign up for both public comment periods has closed at 4:30 PM. Just a quick note once again for everyone that will be speaking in public comment a little bit later in this evening's meeting. Our, just as a quick reminder, I want you, I would hope that everybody can just check quickly how they are signed into Zoom, and we'd ask that you make sure that your screen name on Zoom matches the name that you used to sign up for public comment. Folks might know that have you using before, you can use the tool where it says rename. It's right at the top right of your picture on the screen. So the committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. So thank you in advance for your cooperation. We'll begin the meeting now with the approval of minutes from the August 2020 school meeting. But I'm in motion to approve those minutes from the August 5 meeting as presented. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second or, excuse me, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Excuse me. Ms. Sullivan, may I please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you once again, Ms. Sullivan. Well, we'll move on now to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Breno Casilius.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, members, but good evening. Thanks, everybody online, for joining us this evening. I want to get right to things, but first, before I do, I want to acknowledge that Ms. Jerry Robinson just celebrated a birthday last week on August 13th. So I wanted to say happy birthday, Jerry.
Thank you.
Back to school distribution was a ton of fun. Just yesterday, I was able to join the mayor for a real in-person event, which is rare these days. So it was nice to be able to do that. I also was joined by Commissioner Dempsey from the Boston Fire Department and several other supporters, volunteers, and others who were there at the CROCK Center in Dorchester. It was a ninth annual celebration, which in years past has been held at TD Garden. It's organized by the Salvation Army of Massachusetts Division and TD Garden's Neighborhood Charities and the city of Boston. They were handing out 2,500 backpacks and distributing those to families all across the area there and across three of its Boston locations yesterday. It's more important than ever that we are sending our families home with the essential school supplies and that those backpacks are fully stocked and big enough to hold their computers. In addition to notebooks and pencils and glue sticks and crayons, they, which they usually have, they also had hygiene products this year and, believe it or not, children's masks. So it was wonderful. Rosie's Place was able to make these homemade masks for our children, and so it's just a wonderful opportunity for them, and I can't thank the Salvation Army, TD Garden, for their incredible support and collaboration this year. Next, I want to send out a big congratulations to Coach Sean Ryan of Jeremiah E. Burke High School, who was recently named MIAA Boys Basketball Coach of the Year. My philosophy hasn't changed in my six years at the Burke, be the male role, being the male role model that he is for so many young men in need, and being the father figure that instills discipline off the court, and being there with tough love and through the highs and the lows is what he said. And we just can't thank him for all of his work with our youth, with his incredible role model and inspiring our young men on the court. I've heard from last year's Massachusetts High School Prince of the Year, Lynda McIntyre, that Coach Ryan is a role model for the Bulldogs each and every year. The Burke Boys Basketball Team became co-champions of Division III when their state finals matchup against Sutton, scheduled for Saturday, March 14th, was canceled. I can't wait to see the Bulldogs, led by Coach Ryan, back on the court defending their title someday soon. This week, our school leaders and educators convened the virtual Return to Boston Strong Education Summit. They had three amazing days working together and collaboratively. And although they weren't able to meet in person, you could still feel the unity and energy and excitement for the new school year. I'd like to thank our school leaders for their unwavering dedication to their school communities, which was evident this week in the thoughtful discussions that they had with one another. I also want to thank the Division of Academics for planning the event. They were able to secure two incredible keynote speakers, Dr. Bettina Love, Dr. Ibram Kendi, who joined us in the powerful and passionate discussion around equity, anti-racism, and affirming the diverse cultures within our community, and applying this lens to all that we do, particularly supporting our students of color. We also heard from some amazing youth leaders, including our amazing BSAC members, our Associated Latina wonderful members, and Hyde Park Task Force, who were on a panel and just blew it out of the park, amazing young people. And then we also heard from the city of Boston's first ever youth poet laureate from Fenway High School. She's a rising senior, Alondra Bobodia, who is such an inspiration and an incredibly powerful storyteller. I want to also thank BTU President Jessica Tay and our own Dr. Lorna Rivera and Mayor Walsh for their remarks this week as well. Anything else that is about to go on is just an amazing, amazing, amazing school year, and we are returning Boston Strong. I also want to highlight the Carter School. Last night, Tuesday, August 18th, the city of Boston's Public Facilities Department, along with our building designers and Principal Mark Connor, held their first community meeting for the new Carter School. Early conceptual designs were introduced, and as the process moves forward, more community meetings will be held to discuss how the project is going to impact the neighborhood. The school staff has been involved in the visioning for the state-of-the-art facility, the first of its kind. We're really excited about it, serving students ages three through 22 with intellectual, physical, and medical challenges. Mayor Walsh and the city of Boston have made this new building a priority, and we are very grateful for their support. I also want to thank Counselor Flynn, as well as Chair and Ms. Robinson for joining the virtual meeting last week. We hit two big milestones over the last two weeks in our Food Nutrition Services. Last Monday, we crossed the one and a half million meals that we've distributed to our students since closing school. We also already passed 1.6 million meals. This includes more than 650,000 meals that we've delivered to students with disabilities who regularly receive door-to-door transportation. Last week was a really fun week. Our meal sites also offered grab-and-grow kits to our students to experience growing something edible at home. New England grown vegetables and fruits are appearing more and more on BPS menus, and this gets our kiddos excited about eating healthy and local. Thank you to the Boston Cares volunteers for their help in setting up those kits and all their support over the last few months. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, that this has been such a tremendous collaborative effort from our FNS department and many other departments and our credible volunteers who have just gotten this done for our kids and come together and just really, really proud of this effort. So, and one other big thing is that this week, we surpassed more than 400,000 toiletries that have been distributed to our meal sites since schools closed. And I want to thank the Boston Resiliency Fund grantee and longtime BPS partner, Katie's Closet, for providing these essential personal hygiene products to our students and our families. Great teamwork all around. I want to just remind school committee members and any elected officials and really anyone out there in the public that we need to continue to press for our food waiver. Since March 17th, we've been able to have in place the ability to distribute food in a safe manner that supports social distancing, but also makes it more accessible to our families due to the Families First Corona Response Act of 2020, which the USDA granted us a nationwide waiver, allowing school districts the flexibility to provide meals to children. These waivers have included parents and guardians being able to pick up the meals without their students. It allowed for us to have non-congregate feeding, meaning they didn't have to be in the cafeteria, meaning they could have grab-and-go meal service. And so, and it also allowed us to provide meals to students that weren't Boston Public School students, but were students to the whole city, which is a huge, huge benefit to the city. Right now, the waiver was extended until August 31st of this year, and we really need that waiver back in place. And so any support, writing to legislators, writing to your congressmen and women senators, and asking them to put the pressure on the USDA to give us this waiver would be greatly, greatly appreciated. I wanted to just briefly mention some of the work that we are going to be presenting this evening. Since March 17th, we've been working and providing our students everything that they need, and this is meant to sharp focus on the immediate needs of our students, families, and educators. But we know that the strategic work we have to do is still extremely important to our ability to meet the goals we set out in our five-year strategic plan. And even though it may feel as though we've been stalled by COVID, I want you all to know that the work continues, and we are forging ahead with our equity work and the deep work of improving our practices and our policies so that every child is successful, and that that means starting at the earliest ages all the way through graduation and beyond. And that means creating environments in which children are supported and feel safe. Later in the meeting today, we are going to present two critical policies in that journey. Before my time as superintendent, many in the early childhood space, including Ms. Robinson, have called for pathways for UPK students, and tonight, we have a policy that we want to bring forward to you that the early childhood team has worked on for quite a few many years. We're proud to bring this to you, and I believe this will be a way for us to help recruit parents to the district, provide certain pathways and improve quality, and improve enrollment in our school district. Also, as you know, the district has struggled with data privacy and sharing. We have, we are going to be bringing forward a strong policy this morning that will be a first step in protecting the student privacy of our students and helping them feel safer. I'm proud of the collaborative process, and I want to thank Ms. Oliver Davila for her leadership and partnership in the working group that we held. We have been holding meetings all year, and as you know, we brought forward a policy in April. We determined at that time, and the school committee supported, a more collaborative process. So we spent all summer working on that to create a policy that will help us hold ourselves accountable and provide public transparency and oversight. These two policies are a testament to the good work that is going on every day in BPS and the strategic goals of amplifying voice, cultivating trust, and activating partnerships. But before we get to those, I have my team here to help me give you all a glimpse of the incredible cross-sector work that we've been engaged in for months so that we could be ready to reopen schools for our students. I know everyone is anxious and wants certainty, and I've heard loud and clear that they want to believe us and that they want to trust us, that our bathrooms are going to be clean, that our windows are going to be replaced, that our HVAC systems will be up, and that teachers will have what they need to be prepared for the academic school year. So I brought the team with me to share with you our preparation work. And this week, the principals are going to also be returning to their buildings. They'll be doing walkthroughs and lifting up any areas of concern and doing a second check. And the second check is our second guarantee that our school buildings are ready and that we're going to put forward our best safety measures to ensure that our students and our staff are safe to return. I can't thank the team enough for their hundreds of hours and their personal sacrifice that they made this summer so that we could have a successful reopening. And with that, I'd like to be able to get started on our reopening. I'm on mute. No, you can hear me right?
No, I think I would just muted. I'm sorry. I was just speaking up. Before we get started with your presentation, we typically take a moment after your superintendent's report and go around the table to see if there's any questions or comments from the school committee. So let's take a pause, and I'll open it up to members for any questions or discussion. Ms. Robinson?
Yes, I just want to say that I want to thank everyone that was part of the August Leadership Institute. It was phenomenal. There was just so much energy and so many focuses that were important. I wish that not only all of us, the school committee, but city council, the mayor, and the city could have heard some of the presentations, because I feel particularly at the times that we are in or going in or moving forward in, there are a lot of messages to help us think about the work that we have to do for the students that we have. And I think one of the most lasting comments that were made was, please, don't go back to managing inequality. So as we think about the reopening of schools and all the things that we need to do, to remember that we have very strong responsibilities of making sure that we are supporting all of the kids in our district, and I just hope the enthusiasm and the passion that was in the room these last three days will be able to continue as we move forward in the school year. So thank you, Superintendent, and thank you for the whole planning team that made that possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Mr. O'Neil?
Superintendent, I just want to echo what Ms. Robinson said. I also found the August Leadership Institute excellent. Really enjoyed participating, and particularly the ones you called out, the session, the conversation between Dr. Love and Dr. Kendi. I found very enlightening about how we can become an anti-racist district. So thank you for arranging that. And I also want to give a shout out to our colleague who came with us today, Dr. Rivera, as you mentioned. She keynote this morning and really, really thought-provoking comments about the work that the district has done regarding our English language learning students, but more importantly, the work we still have to do and why it is so important and why it makes sense. And I learned by listening to Dr. Rivera this morning. I was proud to have her as a colleague. So thank you for arranging for her to speak this morning.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Vice Chair?
Yes, I wanted to, I'm sorry that I missed that. I wanted to thank Dr. Rivera, considering that she is going through some hard times for actually being able to speak today. So I just appreciate her. And I wanted to say, I would love if, as a school committee, we could maybe read all together How to Be an Anti-Racist. I think that would be something we could all embark on together. And I just had one little comment, which was, and it's only because it was my very first real job out of college working at the Hyde Square Task Force, because I know you said Hyde Park, and so I want to make sure I actually get credit. That's the Hyde Square Task Force. Thank you.
Thank you for that correction.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and thank you to the superintendent for reminding us all of Ms. Robinson's birthday. So I hope you had a lovely day earlier this week, Ms. Robinson. And thank you to Ms. Robinson as well for reminding us of the great speech that, or the great reading, I should say, that Ms. Bobodia, our youth poet laureate from Fenway High, read to the ALI earlier this week. We weren't able to show that at the meeting this evening, but we have asked the press office at the district to tweet out that, a link to that speech so that others can see it and through other social media means as well. Very powerful and moving speech, and we appreciate Ms. Bobodia's work in that regard. Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. You've been very good over the years to buy us books and keep us in good reading. I think Just Mercy was the last assignment we received from you, which was an excellent book. And so I think your suggestion is right on, and I think we can probably fund some funds in the school committees reserves to purchase a set of books for the committee and our staff. So thank you for that suggestion. Okay, before we move on, just a little bit of formality, since we are in a virtual setting, we need to take a brief vote to accept the superintendent's report. So if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report as presented. So thank you, Ms., looks like Ms. Robinson in a second from the vice chair. Any discussion or objection? Ms. Sullivan, please call the roll.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera? Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Report is passed unanimously.
Well, thank you once again, Ms. Sullivan. And as I know, the superintendent already previewed briefly in her comments at the end of her superintendent report, we are going to have, out of order this evening, two reports to start off our meeting. One on reopening and the second on the deep work that's been done with the working group on the student information sharing policy. So we'll look forward to those reports coming up. On reopening, just as a, by way of introducing this presentation that the superintendent and her team are kicking off, I want to remind members and the public that are watching at home, this district's been providing regular updates to, on reopening to the committee throughout the summer. And they scheduled these regular updates at the last three meetings in particular. And as folks probably know, last Friday, BPS filed its second draft of the district reopening plan with DESI. And beyond settling in that plan that schools will resume for all grades beginning on September 21st, the district continues to move toward announcing an affirmative timeline for reopening and the mode of learning that will be available to all students across the district. So tonight, I think we'll hear quite a bit, and I'm glad to hear the superintendent brought her team with her, about this careful and complex planning process, which calls for participation and cooperation from BPS employees across the city, as well as input and support from other city departments and the Public Health Commission, as well as the MBTA and many other partners that work with us on a daily basis to get our students to and from school safely and educate them and feed them within our school environments. But we appreciate the public's patience. We know people are thirsty for this information, and they want to hear as many details as possible. And so we're looking forward to that information on facilities and academics and everything else in between tonight. But again, we appreciate the patience, and we'll continue to monitor the health data and assess our readiness to welcome teachers and students back to the building. So before, and just in, just to, you know, drive home the point, you're going to hear a lot of information tonight, members. I've had a brief preview of what the superintendent's looking to talk about tonight along with her team. Same goes for the public. I just do want to make sure that we reiterate a couple of key facts that folks should keep in mind. And one that I think, you know, might be lost on, on people out in the general public is that, you know, no matter what the district decides with respect to hybrid or in-person learning, families will always have the option to do remote learning at any point during the fall. So as the district begins to start surveying our families beginning this evening in native languages, we'll try to close that survey over the next week so that we have a much better sense of what the scope is for the planning needs that the district will need to conduct for hybrid and in-person learning over the next four to six weeks, again, and assuming that the public safety, excuse me, the public health data allows us to move in that direction. So with that, I'll turn it over to the superintendent and her team to provide us with an update on where we stand with reopening. Superintendent?
Very good. Thank you very much. Let me put this slide up, please. So I'm going to go ahead and just give a really brief overview, and you've done such a nice job, Mr. Chair, already. I'll be very, very brief then, and then we'll just go right into the presentations on each of my colleagues who will be presenting their part in the really deep work that they've been doing all summer. I mean, literally hundreds of hours have been put in around the clock, you know, since, since probably around May, when we first went to remote, where we just started to dig in and try to better understand remote learning, where we thought we could improve upon that. And then, you know, the drafting of the original framework that we presented to you on July 22nd. Very, you know, skeleton kind of, you know, this is what we're thinking to get some reaction, and then to really dig in and do some engagement to give us more time to meet the DESI timeframe, which was originally August 10th, and then they extended, yeah, they extended it to August 14th. And so we were able to then put in a draft to you all and to the public by July 24th, and then get started on our working groups, and then get the final draft to the department by August 14th. So next slide. So part of the guidance that the commissioner gave us was a little bit of an extension so that we could be prepared. He worked with the State Union, Teachers Union, to be able to negotiate lesser days that would be required in the calendar year for students. They were going from 180 to 170. What that then did is give us an additional opportunity to provide for some professional development for our teachers. As you know, we bring them back on September 8th and September 9th, and that was already calendared for them to come. But this will give them several more days to get prepared so that they can be in the buildings and they can see them for themselves and feel more comfortable and get settled in, as well as meet and get professional development around the new technology and then also the new safety protocols that they will need. Parent choice and families, you've already mentioned this, that parents will always be able to choose remote, and that is for five days home online learning. We will provide the computer and Wi-Fi to families that need it and ensure that they have access. There's also the opportunity for in-person, at-home learning. Now, we are still trying to look at the science and measure that and see, see about how we might do that. And that is the, the work ahead in the next, next few days here as we begin to really dig into the latest numbers. Then the hybrid options are more defined around the hybrid A B model, which is two days of in-person, two groups of students, and then three days of remote learning. And then the hybrid C model, which is any particular case-by-case situations that we need to address in order to meet the needs of our students who have varying disabilities, as well as our high-need students. And so we anticipate that the learning model selections will go out today, later on today, and we will begin that and continue on until we have an answer for students. If students do not reply back, then we will put them in the in-person and give them transportation. So we'll cover that a little later in the presentation. Next slide. So the areas we'd like to lift up are the areas that I think most people are concerned about and want to hear about. There are obviously a number of other cross-sector pieces that are critical, and they are in our 80-page reopening plan online. And so I encourage people to go to www.bostonpublicschools.org/reopening. And they then can find all of this information there, but we will highlight just some of that for you. We're going to highlight facilities. We're going to highlight health protocols, our academic program and around remote learning. And what does that look like? And how are we going to improve remote learning, which is a question? And then family learning models and choice, and then take your, take your questions and discussion. Next slide. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sam DePina to talk about facilities.
Good evening, everyone, members of school committee and the public. I'm excited to share this information. So as you can see from some of these photos, we've done a lot of good work with our team in building preparations. So wanted to give everyone a snapshot of just some small examples of some areas that were done. And so also want to call out and thank all the members of our facility team for all the hard work. Next slide. So as of, as of today, we have 121 of our 125 buildings cleaned and prepared, summer cleaning, which means taking furniture out of classrooms, doing floor refinishing and doing some deep cleaning. So all but about four are remaining, and those four and a few others have construction going on in them. We have 17 My Way Cafe kitchens under construction now, with additional 11 to be slated to be done in the fall. So in those areas in schools, we have a little bit more clean to do, but we're on track to have all those done by school opening. We've mounted wall sanitation stations throughout entrances and exits throughout the buildings. Each classroom will have two, three, 33.5 ounce sanitation bottles in the classrooms, and we'll monitor the burn rates and replace those as we need to. Every school has a three-month supply of toilet paper disinfectant bottles in every school with the ability to order on a monthly supply as well. So there's ongoing supply to schools. We've ordered 30 foggers to help disinfect buildings. And we believe with those on hand, we can clean all the schools on the Monday in weekend plan that we have. But we have an additional foggers coming on September 8th, where we'll have one in every school. And we've also have cleaning protocols that we'll share more publicly that has been approved by the Boston Public Health Commission, and we follow in all the CDC guidelines and Health Commission guidelines. Next slide. With regard to water, all existing water coolers have been freshly cleaned and replaced. We have about 1,400 of those. New coolers and cups have been placed in 36 schools, and water fountains were shut off due to COVID restrictions. And since July 1st, because of suspending of the new fiscal, the new year, the beginning of the new fiscal year, where we have funds available, the Plumbing and Division reevaluated and are repairing approximately 2,000, 200 bathrooms with faucets and fixtures and those kind of things. For example, in the last 14 days, we had 116 faucets repaired and 113 flushometers repaired. And the remaining schools are scheduled for completion before September 10th. And as usual, we continue to flush all water systems so we don't have issues with, with the water systems. Next slide. So currently, the district has 35 schools with HVAC systems. All these systems have had their filters replaced, the systems have been cleaned, and any ongoing maintenance that's required has been completed and up to date. We only have one school that we're currently repairing, but that should be complete by the end of this week. With our window project, phase one of our work required us doing initial assessment, and we wanted to make sure that at least one operable window was in place in every school. We are on pace to have all those complete by the beginning of school year. And the second phase of the work is starting now is where we're going to be replacing 7,000 additional windows to add more air ventilation in and around the buildings, not just the classrooms. And as approved by the Health Commission, we typically do two environmental audits every year where we test air quality. We're currently exploring how we're going to increase that frequency in the coming year. And lastly, one of the big pieces of guidance is box fans to help increase the air circulation in buildings. We have about 4,300 classrooms in the district, and if you subtract the classrooms with the HVAC schools, we have about 3,000 classrooms that will require fans, so we're ordering those fans as well. Next slide. With regard to PPE and signage, we currently have plans and ordered 1,000, 157,000 reusable masks. So that would be two that will give out to students and staff so that they each have some that we provided. I want to thank the Red Sox for donating 70,000 reusable masks as well. So that'll be help, that'll be used to help distribute the reusable masks. We have 130,000 disposable masks currently on stock with additional 2 million being ordered so that we have plenty on stock for when students need some replacements during emergencies. We've ordered about 4,700 pieces of Plexiglas, and we anticipate getting that delivery on the 27th for school and administrative places. We have a second order of about 4,000 pieces going out to bid. So we'll have additional Plexiglas that we'll be able to provide to schools and in places where we may need them. We have protective vinyl sheeting that we've identified about 137 places where those are needed. Countertops or high-traffic areas that don't accommodate Plexiglas. We want to make sure that we have something there because, as you may know, the, these Plexiglas, if you drop them or you mishandle them, they break very easily. We want to make sure we have other alternatives for places that require, that have higher-traffic areas. We have ordered about 63,500 PPE directional signs that we, that are due to come in tomorrow, I mean, Friday, actually. And then we're going to get them out to the schools the week of August 24th, and we're going to start hanging them in places where the school administrators give us information about directional traffic flow. Next slide. And these are some examples of the Plexiglas and partitions that we've ordered that will be coming in. Next slide. I'll turn it over to Suzanne Saltabena to discuss the protocols. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam, and thank you to the school committee and superintendent. I'm happy to be here to go over some of our protocols for the School Health Services Department. And I think I'd just like to start by, you know, really saying thank you to the Health Services Central Office Team for all of the support that they've been giving me, and as well as our school-based nurses who have been working with us to, to go through some of the protocols that we've developed to make sure that what we're creating is feasible and workable at a school level and not just something that we're creating to say that we created it. Next slide. So this is just a list of some of the, the protocols that we're working on. We developed a home health screening based off of what the DESI guidance had recommended with, and included some tweaks that our school-based nurses had recommended just in terms of the recommendations for symptoms to look for and the different situations that may happen if a child may be identified as a close contact with a family member or another person, another individual, then they would have that information on that health screening form. We're also looking to create that form in more of a visual way to make it easier for, for families to follow and to hang on their fridge and to reference every morning. Where we've certainly been work collaborating a lot with different in-district partners and external. So we've been collaborating with our Facilities Department on ensuring handwashing is, the access to handwashing is available throughout all of our buildings and that all of our school nurses have handwashing stations in their offices if they did not already have access to a sink. And we're also working with just our overall academics and our whole team to ensure that handwashing is something that is enforced and really built into the schedule. Because even though we have time to, that, you know, we have hand sanitizer, it's always best to use soap and water to really remove all of, you know, to really remove all of the pathogens and anything that might be on our, on our students' hands. Where we will be enforcing mask-wearing, and we're so grateful to have the Red Sox and our Facilities Department for purchasing a lot of those masks. There will be a little bit of variation depending on needs. So we, we do have, we do have some specialized personal protective equipment or PPE that will be available depending on the needs of our students and staff. And so our nurses may, may need additional PPE for the things that they may have to do with, in, within their office. So that means having N95 respirators available and fit-tested for them to use. We're also working to ensure that all of what we've already established, that we will be physically distancing within our classrooms. So that means our desks will be spaced six feet apart. So along with wearing the mask, you know, that really does reduce the risk of transmission. We are working with facilities and with our school leaders and school nurses to ensure that each of our buildings has an identified room where it, you know, we, the slide says isolation room, and some of the DESI guidance has, has said isolation room. But truly, it's just a room where we can ensure if anyone is symptomatic for any reason, that they're separate from the school community to reduce the risk of transmission so that a child has a place to wait for a parent guardian to pick them up from school. And all of our school nurses, I'm sorry, all of our school buildings have a full-time school nurse, and we will be increasing the capacity to support those school nurses. We were just identified additional capacity building support. So we're looking forward to getting those nurses hired. And we, along with that, our COVID monitoring containment protocols. We're working very, very closely with the Boston Public Health Commission's Infectious Disease Bureau. So the Infectious Disease Bureau does perform all of the contact tracing for the city of Boston. But what Boston Public Schools commits to doing is identifying the possible contacts within the classroom, within the bus, and within any school space or area who may have been or who could possibly be identified as a close contact and providing that information to the Health Commission in order to support the timely investigation of these cases and these situations. And so that would mean just a closer quarantine for people that, or a quicker, faster quarantine for people who were identified as a close contact. And so the close contact, just because I've said it a few times and I didn't mention what it is, a close contact is clinically defined by the, by the Centers for Disease Control as a person who is identified as being within six, six foot of distance or less for at least 15 minutes. So I'll talk more, a little bit more about that when we get to our next slide. But, and the next part here on here is isolation. So if a person is identified as having tested positive for COVID-19, they will be asked by their healthcare provider to isolate for a period of at least 10 days. And after that 10 days, if the person is no longer symptomatic, if they no longer feel sick and they've been without a fever for 24 hours, we will work with them to get them back to school in whatever capacity, as a teacher, as a student. But that individual has to be isolated for at least 10 days, be free from symptoms, or I'm sorry, free from fever for 24 hours without medicine and others, and have other symptom improvement. And just the last piece on this one is testing. We are working with the Health Commission and all of our community health centers and local hospitals that we currently have partnerships with and others to increase capacity so that they, and increase our communication so that we, our nurses can call these clinics to ensure that our families or even our staff are able to present to one of these sites and, and receive testing if necessary, if they need it, in order to facilitate their, you know, their safety and well-being. Next slide, please. So these are just two examples of, you know, protocols that we've sort of developed. The first one is what the school nurse would go through, and that, in that describes the type of symptom and the action that the nurse would take and the communication that would ensue. So if a child only has a fever, then it, the nurse will evaluate, go through the nursing process, contact the parent, contact, you know, possibly the primary care provider clinic, and to help facilitate some type of an appointment. And this, this image is actually also included in our other guidance, in the version two guidance. The next chart on the right is an outline of what basic situations of what would happen within classrooms if there were, if there were a positive case identified or a symptomatic student identified in the classroom. So I also would just like to mention that this was created, and this was created previously. And this afternoon, we received additional guidance that was released, a collaborative guidance that was released from DESI, from DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. So we are working to align it, but in terms of just this chart on the right, some, everything is, everything that we've created here was run through the Boston Public Health Commission. And whatever is, we will be following the recommendations from the Health Commission to ensure our student and staff safety. All set. Next slide.
Good evening. Thanks, Suzanne, for walking us through those really important protocols. I'd like to ask if I may have a few of my team members join. So you can turn your cameras on now, team, if you'll be taking a speaking part. In the next few minutes, we'll be sharing our slides. So good evening, school committee, buenas noches, members of the Boston community that join us. In the next few slides, we'll very briefly, as briefly as we possibly can, share the considerable evaluation, reflection, and planning that we've done over the last several weeks and months, really, to answer this critically important question for our district's classrooms and schools. You can go to the next slide, please. Thanks. How will remote instruction be improved for this coming September? So if you can go to the next slide, first want to talk with you a little bit about how we are framing our, our recovery. So as we think about our principles for academic recovery, we recognize that prioritizing the social, emotional, and physical wellness of our students, families, and staff, it's really the only way to adequately address equity and to ensure health and safety during our return to school. We must design equitable instructional recovery, knowing that we have to focus on Maslow before Bloom. And what we specifically mean by that is, in Maslow's hierarchy of needs, students and staff must feel healthy and safe before they feel cared for, engaged and have a sense of belonging, and that that foundation has to be set before anybody is ready to learn or teach. So our district's approach will be actively anti-racist and culturally responsive in order to be effective and in order to ensure positive health, learning, and life outcomes for our students. Focusing on individual and collective well-being builds trust and is key to moving us from trauma of the twin pandemics that we're experiencing to healing. I'll turn it over to Jill Carter, Assistant Superintendent of our Office of Health and Wellness.
Thank you, Andrea. Good, good evening, everyone. So just to speak a little bit more on, on this, this illustration, the blue path on the right shows the importance that strong social-emotional practices play. School communications and School communications and connecting with our staff, students and families around health and safety needs builds trust and sets the stage for establishing strong relationships, love and belonging, which are all essential for self-esteem and teaching and learning. BPS schools will use these strategies to build school communities that are safe, healthy, welcoming, joyful, anti-racist and culturally and linguistically sustaining. This is the work of every educator and all support staff in every school, in every office, in every space that Boston Public School students inhabit. This is exemplified by the whole school, whole community, whole child approach to learning and wellbeing, which is recommended by the CDC and currently outlined in our wellness policy, our opportunity gap policy and our strategic plan.
Next slide, please. Thank you. So this spring and summer, we ran dozens of focus groups and community meetings. Thank you again to all of you who were able to participate, give us your input, your feedback and to share your experiences with us. We heard from stakeholders about the ways in which remote instruction was working for their children, for their students. And most importantly, for our planning, ways that it was challenging. We really leaned into listening to what wasn't working. Translation supports, access to technology, internet access. Our colleagues in the Office of Technology have addressed these challenges in our reopening plan. On instruction, though, there was confusion about where to find assignments. Too many Zoom links and too many Google classrooms. Too much synchronous learning that didn't fit family and student work schedules. Lack of full access to the applications that were highest leverage. Overwhelming was by far the way that many parents, students and teachers and frankly, central office teams described the experience this spring. And for us, we found ourselves not always having our finger on the pulse. We're used to being in classrooms and schools, getting a sense of how it's going. And without the ability to walk into classrooms and walk around with our leaders, we found ourselves relying on quantitative data that didn't necessarily tell the whole story. Next slide, please. So our improvement strategy for this fall is framed around three main ideas. Clarity. Provide clarity around the guardrails and the standard so we're all clear on what's expected. Supports. Provide high-quality supports so that folks can meet that expectation. And lastly, accountability. We hold ourselves and each other accountable to that standard and that set of guardrails that we've put in place. I'll turn it over next to my colleague Christine Landry, Assistant Superintendent in the Office of Academics.
Thank you Andrea.
Next slide, please, sorry.
No problem. Thank you so much Andrea. Good evening, everyone. So I'm gonna talk about the first part, which is clarity in response to some of the challenges that we had in the spring. So first, DESI has provided us with some clear guidance that this is going to be school. It's not an emergency school, crisis, remote learning, but a return to a different form of school, but school nonetheless. So we'll have a regular school day that we're planning for. Regular services for our English learners, for our English learners with disabilities and all of our students with disabilities. And setting clear expectations from the outset for students and for families around grading and attendance will be key. So also some other additional changes that we're making in terms of providing clarity to our community. The learning management system is going to be an important piece. There were some strengths with Google Classroom, but especially for our youngest students, it was a bit of a challenge for families and for students. So we're implementing CSO, which in the schools where it was in place was extremely well-received and very supportive of our youngest learners and also some of our learners with additional needs. So this means that families will have one place to go to find everything that they need for remote learning. Also, we'll use Aspen SIS for scheduling and for attendance, including our ESL classrooms and our resource classrooms as well this fall. It will be a bit of a, a change for teachers and leaders to adapt to because we don't typically take attendance for all of those classes. But it will ensure that services are provided and if there's any gap, that we fill it immediately. Also, we'll continue to use Panorama for student success. So all schools will use this platform to monitor student success plans and use their SST or their student support teams through an MTSS framework to ensure that every single student has the interventions that they need. We're also in response to feedback from families and from our teachers, where we've adopted several adaptive learning platforms, that, those that were most, most well-used and also those that received the most positive feedback from the spring, we're adapting and adopting across the district. We're also thinking about materials for at-home learning. So each of our schools will be expected to ensure that students have the materials that they need to learn at home. And we've provided recommended list for that to all schools. We're excited that we're also adopting Talking Points, which is a two-way multilingual family communication for all of our schools. As Jill mentioned before, transformative SEL practices are going to be an incredibly important part of our, our work this fall in welcoming our students back after a very traumatic experience. So we're providing guidance for integrating transformative SEL practices into every lesson and every day. Virtual home visits and conferences are also going to be a key part of our return. So we'll be providing guidance for teachers and school leaders about how to conduct those. And as well, we've reframed all of our professional learning to support remote instruction. So those of you are so happy that so many of you were able to be a part of ALI and TSI so far this week. And if you were a part of it, you saw that we are framing as many of the sessions as we can from a remote learning perspective. So I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague Shakira Ford Walker, Assistant Superintendent of Teacher Leadership, to talk about support.
Thank you Christine. Good evening. So this next slide details the ways in which we will support our various stakeholders in implementing high-quality remote learning. These include, but not are limited to, at-home learning kits to ensure our students have the requisite supplies needed for at-home learning, ongoing professional learning, as Christine just mentioned, for both our school leaders as well as the many educators across the district. We were excited this week to launch our Educator Summit, which included a series of sessions to kick off this school year based on the needs and learning interests of our various stakeholders. Our ongoing PD will focus on pedagogy adapted to the moment. And as Christine said, what are those best practices that we will need to employ in order to ensure our teachers, our support staff members engage in remote learning in such a way that will ultimately augment student achievement. We will also host a series of workshops to support our families, to engage them in thinking about the ways in which they can support their students at home. We've revised our scope and sequence and are currently in exploration around virtual coaching and learning walks in an effort to improve instruction and ultimately think about the ways in which we implement those practices that will serve to monitor and augment growth for all of our kids. I'm gonna turn it over to, I think Andrea next.
Thanks Shakira. And if you could go to the next slide, we'll take a look at the detail of that last section of our three-pronged strategy around accountability. So we have a number of processes and methods that are either launching now for the first time in our remote learning in an improved way or that we're just improving from what we learned this spring. Equity roundtables will be a way that we continue to, but have refined our processes around making sure that we're having routine feedback from school communities that include parents, teachers, students, community members and at the district level as well. So those will be happening in a, on a bi-weekly basis and will provide us that data that we need, both at the school level and the district level to make continuous improvement in really quick cycles. Data dashboards will be available at the school, region and district level. And again, given that we've set up the guardrails now around attendance, around student success plans and around attendant, sorry, assessment, we'll be able to pull and pull all that data in really regular and really consistent ways. Excited to develop protocols together with our school leaders, teachers and central office teams around virtual walkthroughs. So we again can get that sense of what's happening in our classrooms. Let's get our finger back on the pulse, even in the remote space. We'll be looking for school-level adherence to guardrails, always with an asterisk there around flexibilities with autonomies. And we'll be partnering closely with our school superintendents to support our school leaders with, with those guardrails. Our English learners, again, really glad to partner with OIT to make sure that our student information system is designed and structured in a way where we can have ESL course-level attendance happening across all grade levels. So we can pull that data easily, share it with our, excuse me, with our partners like the DOJ, who are quite interested in those data, with our families and obviously with, with you all here in the school committee. And then finally, to echo what Christine was talking about earlier, grading, progress reports and report cards, we're, we're in school again, right? According to the DESI guidelines, this is not crisis, emergency, remote learning. All of our regular school year policies and practices are in place. So looking forward to any questions you all may have and wanna thank my team for all their time, effort, energy. There are a couple of us that did not speak tonight that have, that are either on the call and many of us who are not that I just wanna make sure are acknowledged and thanked for their incredibly hard and excellent work. I think at this point, I'll turn it over back to the superintendent.
I think Monica was gonna speak about the survey.
Yep, next slide, please.
Thank you Andrea.
Superintendent, maybe if I can take a pause here just for a brief moment while Ms. Roberts is getting situated. Would it make sense for us to perhaps take a pause and go around the table? I see a few nodding heads. I'm sure there's a number of questions that have been built up already for facilities as well as academics.
This is our last slide.
Oh, okay. I know it's been through a number of iterations, so.
No worries. Good evening, everyone. So I'll make this quick. We are starting to ask families to identify the learning model that they would prefer for their children. As you know, there are two options we're asking them to select from, one being remote learning or hybrid. And connected to this, we're asking families to determine if they are doing hybrid learning and their child is eligible, whether they would use the, our transportation services or not. That work has actually started this evening. The, the form was just sent out a little bit over an hour ago. We already have almost 1,800 responses from families. Yeah, you got yours? That's great. And so we're, we are hoping to get some really quick results on that. But we are understanding that we'll need to do some targeted work to connect with our families. So we will also be doing mobile calls. We're reaching out to our ethnic media and broader media to make sure that folks are aware and know to please fill out your form. Every student has their own individual form so that we can track who hasn't, hasn't, hasn't submitted their form. And then starting next week, for our 9,000 families who do not have an email address, as well as families who might be a little harder to reach, we're gonna start doing individualized phone calls using HubDialer and asking our school partners to provide some support. So I won't take much more time. I know there are a lot of questions, but we're really glad we're at the point of being able to connect with our families and ask them about their choices. Thank you.
Thank you Monica. Just the last bullet there as well, that if families are not responsive, even after we do HubDialer and really try to do all of the reach out, we will automatically put them into the hybrid model with transportation because it's the easiest one to shift later on in terms of, you know, our building capacity and our, and our transportation routing. So we wanted to make sure everybody has that option and then we can always change it back to remote only, which is much, much simpler. So thank you to my entire team who just has been working seriously countless hours. And I hope this gives you a glimpse into the hard work of the team and the readiness that we have if we are to choose in person or remote. So we'll take your questions now.
Thank you very much Superintendent. If members would like to raise their hands virtually or otherwise, we'll, we'll go around the table and start with questions. And I, maybe I should start here. I, I know there's a couple of folks that presented, some folks that didn't get a chance to present. I see our Assistant Superintendent for Special Education, our new Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent for Special Education, Ethan Dobellmarn Burns is with us. Is there anyone else that we might have missed? Ms. Fake Harp? Ms. Zayas, anyone else from your team?
Thank you Chair. I'd love to acknowledge both of, both of them. So thank you for that, as well as our Deputy CIO, Dr. Rajean Filippo Pierre has joined us as well. And to join you later, Executive Director of Early Childhood, Jason Sacks is also on the line.
Great. And we'll be talking to you, Mr. Sacks, a little bit later with the UPK presentation. Okay, so now that we've had a chance to get settled and absorb what's a lot of information packed into 22 very action-packed slides, we'll go around the table for questions and discussion. Ms. Robinson, looks like you are shaking your head. You've got some questions. And if anyone else would like to raise their hands, we'll get you in the queue.
Yeah, again, thank you to the team for this extraordinary work. I know how difficult it is and I know as many answers as we have, we have 10 times as many questions. So I have a couple that I'd like to start with. One, I'm glad to see how much work has been done to get schools ready. How close are we to having example schools that are set up? That we can really see how all of this plays out? I know we talked about that at our last meeting, that you would actually set up a whole school so that there could be some walkthroughs to really see this work in place.
That might be for Sam or Tammy Pous might have an answer to that. I know that we were working toward that. I just don't know the date. Ms. Robinson, I could certainly get that for you.
Okay. The other is concern about the ventilation. One working window is of a big concern to me. I know during this weather, having one working window in my kitchen is not enough for me, one person. So how do we come to the conclusion that one working window in a large classroom would be adequate? And then secondly, I know that there's still concern around the spread of virus through the use of fans. You know, that you can still spread droplets, et cetera. How are we advocating that these measures would be safe?
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. So just to clarify, we have 20, about 27,500 windows in the district and most of our classes have more than one window in them and most of them are working. So with the round one phase of analysis that we conducted, we've only identified about 300 classrooms where one was not working and we're fixing all those now. So the, the idea here is that there already currently exists more than one window in a classroom. There are, on average, about four to five per classroom. Most of those are working. So they're all, there's plenty of air already going to the windows, which is making sure at least one is open. Then phase two of that work is to repair the 7,000 that we've also identified on top of that. Regarding the question with the fans, the guidance talks about both allowing fans to operate so they could push air out and in depending on the airflow of the building. So we've worked closely with the Health Commission and double and triple checked all the guidance. And we're allowed to use fans. The only concern that we're worried about at this point is that some teachers have complained about the noise that some of them may make. So the, the control settings are gonna be important, how they, how they control the noise. But it is allowed to, to allow for us to push air out in, in using those fans.
Okay. Another question will be, is about the cleaning of bathrooms in between the uses of various classroom groups, knowing that we're not gonna be using the lunchrooms for obvious reasons. But whole schools will be sharing bathrooms and I know many of our schools have very few bathroom facilities. So how is the cleaning of bathrooms literally in between various classroom groups gonna be handled? And then also, and it's part of that, it's just the logistics of spatial distancing and getting kids, you know, because most of our bathrooms are in the basement, at least many of our older schools. The whole issue of how much time it's gonna be taking out of the classroom data, get kids, you know, up and down and through all of the logistics of just going to the bathroom when they're not actually attached to classrooms. So the cleaning and the logistics.
Thank you. So regarding the cleaning, we've increased the frequency and cycle of our custodians cleaning the bathrooms. They'll be visiting them more regularly throughout the day. And luckily, when we do approach the hybrid model, there'll be half the number of students in the schools on a day than normal. So we're actually, in the grand scheme of things, having less kids in the building on a typical day. So we're confident that we can maintain the continuity in cleaning with that level of students to be able to do it more frequently. With regards to the logistics, luckily, most schools allow children to go as they need to go. And we really deter multiple kids from going to the bathroom at a time and hanging out in the bathroom so they don't congregate in the bathrooms, those kind of pieces. So with some of the plans that schools are developing, we'll work closely to make sure they have plans in place to monitor who's leaving at what point to go to the bathrooms. So most schools have systems to do that. For example, when I was at my school, we didn't allow kids to go to the bathroom first 10 minutes, last 10 minutes. And they've identified specific places where and when that can happen. So we're confident by working with the schools and with the limited amount of students in the buildings, we'll be able to keep up with the cleaning and the monitoring of how they access the bathrooms.
I know that we talked about the fact that parents will have a health check that they will need to do before kids come to school. Is there a way that gets managed for kids? You know, again, I'm worried about the spread of just one kid can infect a whole building, given all of this kind of movement, even though we keep saying we're going to have these sort of little pods of kids. So I'm a little bit concerned about the movement and how we can track it if we're not doing a double track when kids come to school, that we're going to just take it on face value of parents, that they have, quote, "checked their child and they are safe." So the movement outside of a teacher-led movement raises some concerns for me. So I'm not sure if there's an answer to that yet or how we're thinking about that.
Hi, Ms. Robinson. Thank you for asking. So I've been really grateful to collaborate with the engagement team in that I was able to participate in the first kind of engagement session with our incoming parents. This was a district-wide event where I was able to walk through some of the listed items of what we're looking for from parents and to really reinforce, you know, what we know that parents are there. They know their child, and they're their child's best advocate. So where I was able to really reinforce that with their parents to really discuss in depth with them the needs to communicate with their school nurse, to communicate with their school teacher, and to really watch their child when they're at home before school starts. It's our recommendation that we would, to continue to follow up with families, to make sure that they are aware of the health screenings and to provide different types of that same form in ways that are easier to follow and easy to read and checking in with them occasionally. But in terms of like, you know, I've read a few other things where it's like sporadic checks and here and there. And the reality is, is that any type of screening that we do, it's not foolproof. So it's possible that we could spend a lot of time and screen a lot of kids and still not find somebody with a fever. And it doesn't necessarily mean that they aren't, that they don't have it. Or we might find someone with a fever, and we would then find out that the fever is related to another viral illness and not COVID-19. So I think that we have a lot of work to do in really communicating and working and partnering with our families. And I think our plan is to just continue to collaborate with the Health Commission, use the resources that they have that we can work on and adapt for our students and families, and really push the messaging out from all sides for the whole city of Boston to really support our families.
Okay. My last question is a little bit different. Given the importance of parent communication, what are we doing to improve both translation and interpretation services at the school level? Because it feels like having appropriate communication immediately is going to be very important as we are, you know, trying to reintegrate kids, et cetera.
So, Ms. Robinson, I'm working with our OEL office, as well as our communications office, to make sure that we have enough staffing for our translation. Also, just to better understand how we're going to make sure that we are timely in those communications and that we'll work with Monica and her division as well, with Parents and Parent University, to make sure that we're doing the reach out.
Right. Thank you very much.
I can add too, that we are very glad to be able to have purchased a platform called Talking Points. Many of our educators were already using the free version during spring remote learning and found it really helpful. The BTU also recommended it in their proposal as well. It is a platform that provides seamless and professionally translated communication between teachers and parents. So the teacher, who may not speak Spanish, for instance, can write the message in English, and it automatically gets translated to the parent in Spanish and vice versa. The parent can communicate in their primary language, and the teacher sees the English. And so we are really excited that this is, I think, going to be a huge game changer for the way that we can partner with parents at the classroom level for reopening.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. We'll go now to Dr. Coleman.
Great. Thanks very much for the report. And, you know, it reflects a tremendous amount of work. So I just want to first start with accommodation and then a question. So the accommodation, and particularly throughout the report, but particularly in the academic learning section, where the focus was on helping parents learn how to be that first teacher. And we all talk about family. We learn first in families. And as schools, that's not always been our strength. So I'm hoping that one of the things that comes out of this turmoil is that we get better at working with our parents around the draft, what's happening in the class and the curriculum, helping particularly those of our parents who are working remotely to become better facilitators of the learning of their children. So the structure is very exciting, and I'm very glad to hear that that was centered in the work. And I really appreciate that. And so then my other question is, my question is, I'm not exactly sure how to phrase this well, but, you know, there's all these process conversations that have been articulated about what we're going to do to distance and hand washing and tracking symptoms. I haven't, and I may have missed it because it's a lot of complex information. What are criteria for deciding when a school, a classroom, the district's at threat? So that, you know, what are the kind of criteria that could be used to make those very difficult decisions if we can't contain it? You know, what's the R score that we're going to identify saying, in this school, this community, this classroom, the transmissions are too high, and we have to back off? So I haven't seen that, and I missed it. I apologize. But, and if it's not there, and I don't need to, I don't expect you to determine it tonight. But I think that'd be useful for us to have, to have a sense of what the criteria reference is for those decisions.
Suzanne, do you want to go to the protocol for that?
Yes, sorry. My dog is barking, so I was trying to wait to see if he would stop.
That's okay. My kids were talking as I was finishing, so I quickly got them muted.
Did you hear the question, Suzanne?
I did. And I think that, so just to kind of start, you know, a lot of those decisions are going to have to be made in a collaborative effort with the Boston Public Health Commission. We're going to have to watch our health metrics. We keep talking about our public health metrics, our transmission numbers throughout the city of Boston, and really focus on that. We're going to have to collaborate on the Health Commission for the science. And so you'll see that there was a slide, and I don't, one of my slides had a picture that did outline the closure of classrooms. But it was small, so I'm not surprised. Let me, if I can pull it up so I can kind of read it to you. So what our protocol currently is, is that if we have a case, if we have a student or a teacher, if someone within a classroom that does test positive, because of the nature of the contact within the classroom, that we would have to, based on what we've already determined and discussed with the Health Commission, that we would close that classroom in the event and shift into remote learning. And so I think when we start talking about additional cases, that's when we would, you know, we would have to work with the Health Commission to determine a link. Because if we have a family, for example, that's within the same building but in different classrooms, they would be close contacts. And, you know, so, and conversely, if we had a situation where we had a few positive cases that were unlinked or unrelated, we would have to really work with the Health Commission to determine if there was a need for any other additional closure. But again, it's such, it really is a complex issue that we are going to have to work with our local experts that we're really lucky to have as partners in this, to really make an informed decision. But for whatever, but whatever we do decide, it'll, you know, it'll always be for the health and safety of our students and staff.
Great. Thank you. I recognize the complexity of it, and just try to think through, you know, at what point it was enough enough. And we may not know. I understand that this is still moving and targeted. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. We'll move on now to Mr. Tran.
Good evening. First of all, I greatly appreciate the plan that is given today. I believe that absent any magical plan out there that would practically and effectively deal with every issue that we are facing nowadays during the pandemic. I think the plan that is introduced today does meet my concern as a parent regarding parents' option, so that satisfies my concerns. The only question I would have given, it is a two-pronged question. The first prong is to deal with students with disability. Of course, in my conversations with numerous parents, with students with disabilities in my community, most would prefer their students to be learning at home through the remote learning. But at the same time, their concern is that the kind of individualized student plan and the kind of accommodations absent, you know, in-person instruction. How do we deal with those kind of accommodations for the parents with, as you know, with different type of disability? That's a big concern right there in my community. The other concern is that I've heard from parents that in the teacher-parent meeting consultation, of course, now we do have some kind of software that would translate the language interchangeably so that teachers and parents can communicate somehow. However, I found that most softwares out there dealing with the Vietnamese language is not as it's supposed to be. You know, the languages or the communication that were translated oftentimes are way off base. I think that is one of the concerns parents have been raising to me in dealing with teacher-parent consultation. So those are the two concerns that I have. But again, you know, overall, I do believe that your plan, as it is written and proposed, given the parent's choice as the priority, does meet my appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. I'm going to ask Ms. Pous to speak to the special ed concerns. And then maybe Ms. Harp can talk again, just a little bit about the translation and how that's going to work.
Thank you, Superintendent. And thank you for your kind words about the thoroughness of our plan as well. With regard to our special needs students, we're very conscious that that population of students, like every population of students, has differing needs. So it's not one size fits all for special needs students either. We did detail in our plan a prioritization based on our most vulnerable special needs learners. So those parents too will get to opt out. If they want to stay remotely, that's fine. But if they want to actually come back to school in the hybrid model on a longer period of time instead of two days, we're looking to find ways to get them back early and get them back for more than two days because we're very conscious that some of our students need more in-person learning. And to the extent that we can accommodate that, we want to do that. And that would include not just our special needs learners, the highest vulnerable ones in that group, but it would also include some of our homeless kids. It will include some of our EL learners as well. And it might include particular populations that are small enough within their own school building that they could be accommodated if they had particular needs that made sense to do that. We're working with our school leaders now to help identify who that is. And again, the superintendent will talk about this at the end of the talk, a little bit about going out to our parents. As we do that, we will find out more about who wants that, who doesn't want that, who is more comfortable staying home. So I share that concern with you. I thank you for raising it, and we're working hard to make sure that we get that one right.
Thank you. Ms. Harp, can you talk just a little bit about the translations with the Vietnamese in particular?
First of all, thank you so much for your feedback. We always endeavor to improve our processes, and we've come a long way as a district and as a translation interpretation unit over the last three years that we've been a formal unit. The platform that I mentioned does not replace interpreters for IEP and other special education meetings. And it will not replace the professional translators that we use for translating written translations. We do have an opening, a vacancy, in our unit for a Vietnamese translator interpreter technician. We've had that vacancy, quite frankly, for pretty much the entire time that we've been in existence as a unit. We've partnered with community organizations like Viet Aid and our other partners to be able to identify a qualified candidate because we know that translation and interpretation is going to be best when it's done by somebody from the local community, not just anybody that speaks that language, but somebody who knows the local community and knows the context of VPS specifically and our education and our terminology. So we welcome any recommendations for candidates for that position. We always encourage our teachers to provide us feedback after every translation and interpretation meeting. We are working on a process as well for parents to be able to provide that feedback so that we can be able to troubleshoot and improve if there are interpreters or translations that are not up to par. We would also love to work with you and to work with our Vietnamese parent advisory council members, perhaps to pilot test the Talking Points platform before it's released widely to the district so that we can get that feedback upfront.
Mr. Tran, if I could just take a moment also. I'm Ethan Valmont Burns, Assistant Superintendent for Special Education. Just, I think it's important also with regard to your question with accommodations, that while in the springtime, DSE gave some flexibility with regard to the implementation of IEPs because of the emergency situation of the spring. That is not the case for, that is not the case for this fall. IEPs need to be fully implemented, and we need to make sure that those accommodations and services are in place. And so we have plans for making sure that our staff really understand not only what those accommodations are, but how to implement them both in a remote and hybrid environment. So that's something that we are understanding and pushing on really carefully because we know how important it is. Thank you. because we know how important it is. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone who's spoken up to respond to those important questions. Move on now to Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent, I'm wondering what number are you modeling that you expect for percentage of remote versus hybrid? What do we think our students are going to, our families are going to choose?
We had our family survey, Mr. O'Neill, and I think that, you know, we had about 40% of our families that were choosing hybrid. And we had about 30 to 40% that were saying remote. And so we'll just, we won't know until we start getting that out. But like Monica Roberts said, just, you know, we started it just this afternoon. We already have about 2,000 responses. And as those come in each day, we'll be able to get a better sense over the next three to five days on what parents are choosing.
And do we see a difference between elementary schools and high schools as an example?
You know, I don't know the, that number and you know, the, because this, the numbers have shifted in terms of the, the percent positive cases in the community, that also correlates with how people are feeling about whether they're going to send their kids to school or not. So we're trying to get this point in time from June to July. And now in August, how are people feeling as we get closer to the school year, as they hear about our readiness plans? Are they feeling more comfortable and settled as they begin to think about moving forward? And I'm not, I, I don't, I don't know the difference by grade level, but we will because each survey is identifiable to that student.
Okay. And Mr. Chair, I recognize, you know, you're between a rock and a hard place, but you want to have this presentation because it's what most of the participants who are watching us want to learn and hear about, but by the same token, we're all anxious to get to public comment or interested, I should say, to get to public comment because that's how we learn. So I appreciate you put this first, but I will limit my questions so that we do get to that. I have read the plan, Superintendent. Thank you for putting it together. And so even though I have questions about transportation, food service, those are all covered in the full written plan. Obviously, you couldn't have everyone presenting on that today. You were trying to do the highlights. What I am interested in though, a couple more questions is about, we keep saying science is going to guide us. And so that's great, but now we're down to the specifics. So the state issued a new map, the green, yellow, red map for, for the state. I know we're also looking at positivity rate. So what are the key metrics that you're looking at? You know, so we can be transparent with families of here's what we're looking for. And if we see changes in X, this is how we anticipate changing. What are the key metrics you are, you are looking at?
Well, I'm looking mostly with my colleague, Chief Martinez, who was here presenting not too long ago with me, as well as the state guidance that comes out that you just mentioned. And so the key metrics we're looking at is to, is that positivity rate as well as looking at ensuring that, you know, we stay below that number. And right now at the state level, it's 5%. And, you know, we'll be, I believe, using a lower percentage within that citywide percentage of positive rate. As you know, we're at our highest ever of testing at about 1,600 tests per day across the city. So that's good. So while the testing is up, we keep looking at that number and then also looking at the positivity rate of those tests.
Yeah. And then the state guidance is about total number of cases per 100,000 residents, right?
That's right. That's right. But yeah.
It's interesting though, that the state guidance, at least for Boston, has us in yellow. But when, as has been pointed out to us by one of our science teachers, interestingly enough, that, you know, the neighborhoods that our youth are in seems to be disproportionately more towards red versus the city overall. And so are you, are you looking at it that way? And are you thinking about a neighborhood by neighborhood decision or at this point are you still focused more on a city decision?
Well, you know, that is something that I actually presented to the city council as well last Wednesday and we did discuss it. And I am working with Chief Martinez on our neighborhood numbers. As you know, our neighbor, our numbers do fluctuate in neighbors and neighborhoods. And so we see them go up and we see them go down. They also are linked to our testing rate. So we want to make sure that we're able to test more regularly and that we're testing our population in each of the neighborhoods, you know, Matapan had been undertested, then you put in more efforts and you start testing and you want to make sure that those positivity rates stay the same over seven period, seven day period. And so I'm in, I'm in constant contact with Marty almost every single day, looking at those measures and that science and making sure that it's solid in terms of our neighborhoods as well as our citywide number.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Are there any other questions or comments for the Superintendent and her team? Vice Chair?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you again, everyone, for all of your work. I know you have been working like day and night on this. I just really want to appreciate all the different teams. I think, again, what I said last week or two weeks ago, is I think that having choice is the most important thing. I think people need to make their own personal choices and I am really glad that that's part of the plan. And thank you for just going a little bit deeper on the safety. I have two questions around, or three, I should say. The water cooler, so I know we got new water coolers, but like, will those be maintained after each use? Like, how does, how does that work?
Sure. Part of our cleaning protocol is called for cleaning high touchy areas. We've added that, that device as part of our high touch cleaning area. So that'll be cleaned regularly as facilities are walking around, making it around.
Okay, great. And I just wanted to say like the wellness checks that I don't know if there has been any looking into like an app, because I know that that schools, different schools are now using apps, which just, is just faster, you know, to be able to get information. So I just encourage if you haven't looked at that to maybe look at that. And then my other question is in the plan. Does this plan, can you clarify what is like the role of the teacher? So the teacher is in the building onsite? This plan?
Which plan are you talking about?
With the hybrid and remote. So the hybrid and remote, if you can just, for clarity. The expectation in the plan is that the teachers would be in the buildings, teaching from the building. Thank you. And then I just wanted to say thank you for like the focus on the, what we learned in remote and the improvements, because I think that there's been so many questions from families about this. And obviously, we've heard a lot about, and realizing that, you know, we had to pivot really quickly. I do want to say that although it wasn't perfect and there were definitely a lot of, you know, room for improvement, I do want to say, you know, we, we did what we could, but I think obviously it can be really better. So I really appreciate the focus on that and the focus on the social emotional learning that you talked about, Ms. Zayas, because I think you're so right that students cannot learn if they don't feel like they have, you know, if they don't feel like they belong, if they don't feel, you know, a sense of community, if they don't have relationships. I was on today with the Rennie Center. They did a panel on how to support remote learning, which Mr. Racine was on. He was really great also. And it really talked about the emotional health of students. And they gave some statistics, 44% Asian, 40% Latino, 31% Black, African American and 30% White students who were in poor emotional health. So I think that's going to be really important. And so I also want to say at the same time that we're facing these really huge challenges. I also think it's a really great opportunity to deepen our relationships with our families and with our students. And I think also, I'm glad to hear about the project base. I'd like to actually, for us to continue down that road because we know that that can be a way to really be, you know, bring that meaningful engagement. I think of, you know, my daughter this summer did an out-of-school time program called Steam Ahead and she loved it. And she said, why can't I learn math like this? Which I felt very vindicated of all my years of out-of-school time. You know, part of it was also, it was the relationships. It was like the material sent home. So I'm glad to see the materials. It was, it was a lot of things and it was hands-on. It was fun. And I would say that there has never been a better time for the project-based pieces because we are in a specific moment in time. We have the census. We have elections. We have Black Lives Matter. We have COVID. We have climate change. It's a perfect time to really delve into these and use, these are like real life experiences happening right now. It's also a great time to like, look at our ethnic studies and bring that in. And I'll wrap up really quickly. Sorry. I just want to ask, while teachers are making these calls, these virtual calls to families, I would really like to see our out-of-school time providers to be given a list of all the external programs and supports that students can access. If teachers are sharing that, if we're already on the ground doing that, it'd be great for teachers to actually share that with parents. And then my last comment, sorry, is I do appreciate and I really want to see the much more deeper piece that you talked about, Ms. Zayas, around like working together with families, because I think so many of us, I include myself, were so lost in the beginning of remote learning. So I really just encourage that. And thank you, Ms. Karp, for clarifying that the translation piece is only used for some other pieces because that's definitely not enough to like build a relationship. So again, thank you to all the team. I know you've been working really hard. And thank you to the Superintendent because I know she's been thinking about this 24 hours a day. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to again, thank Ms. Zayas and the whole academic team for their focus on the social emotional. There is a lot of good that is going to come out of this awful thing. We'll take lemons and make lemonade. Technology access, engagement with families and the opportunity to engage with families that you just brought up, EL learners and the fact that they'll have new technologies and more multilingual supports and more supports for teachers in the multilingual sphere around translation and communication. Out-of-school time partnerships in the, the summer program we have with Boston After School and Beyond and really looking at the out-of-school time and how do we maximize that to support families and children and their child development. Student self-agency and their own social emotional support. Our mental health team, we didn't even talk about the incredible work that they've done to do telemental health with students as well as our capital improvements. I mean, just the fact that we're improving windows and improving HVAC systems and cleanliness in our buildings and fixing our faucets and our water. You know, it is really remarkable what we are able to do when we put our minds to it. So thank you, Ms. Vice Chair, for, for bringing those things up.
Thank you for that, Superintendent, and thank you to the Vice Chair as well for outlining everything. And I'd actually like to start with academics because I'm glad you brought your team once again tonight, Superintendent, to talk a little bit more in depth about the academic work that has been done, both to think a little bit more about what a hybrid method of delivery might look like, but also to address some of those core concerns that we've heard throughout the summer. Ms. Zayas, you and your team, I appreciate in particular, your walking through the many areas where in the, the remote learning experience is intended to be improved based on that feedback that you've received. I'm wondering, are there any models out there, you know, what, I, I understand we're very early into this, of course, with respect to remote learning across the country as a result of the, at least on a large scale and as a result of the, the current public health crisis. But there are other districts out there and schools out there that do remote learning in the K-12 space. And so I'm interested to know what, what's informed your approach here beyond just our typical experience.
Chair, and I want to say thank you to the Vice Chair also and to all of the school committee members for your questions, your thoughtful questions and your feedback and your input as well. We have done an incredible amount of thinking and learning with our Council of Great City Schools colleagues. So we've been on multiple learning opportunities with them. I'd want to say, and also with the Pulp Group at Harvard Business School, Harvard Graduate School of Education. But for our team in particular, the council has been really helpful in sharing best practices, sharing emerging practices. And I'll say that on the teaching and learning side, in particular, the work happening in the Miami Dade Public Schools in Broward County as well, have been really helpful in our thinking about what an infrastructure looks like, how to set the guardrails up and what sort of what, what high-quality resources look like at the district level, right? Those have all been really helpful resources. I'd love to kick that question to my team and have you all add any other samples that you've been looking at. I, I'm sorry, I'd add also the, the work that Student Achievement Partners has done, the work that TNTP and Unbounded have done around defining what equitable recovery looks like at the student level in classrooms, meaning that we need to start with high, with rigorous grade level standards as the expectation and that we cannot begin the school year by reviewing what we may have missed last year. If we do that, we're setting everybody back. We have to start with, start fourth grade, at the beginning of fourth grade and make just-in-time, real-time adjustments along the way, scaffold in smart ways and make sure that all of our students are able to meet the daily, weekly and quarterly benchmarks toward mastery.
I did, I mean, I would say that the early education community, childcare community has been really helpful because they've had kids in their programs and so they made wonderful photo tours for us, remote tours. We got to talk to their staff and so they've been a great partner. And prior to them, the researchers who were doing work in the Boston public schools, when they could not do research, they started sending us reviews of literatures of programs that had already opened up and the Denmark model in particular was one that was adopted by a lot of the early education programs and then we got to see them implement it. So that's been a great partnership.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sacks and Ms. Zayas. I want to move on to some brief health questions. So Ms. Salter Bennett, thank you for your comprehensive presentation. Sounds like a lot of the work that has been going on at the higher education level where I have my day job. And so it's been helpful to hear a lot of the same practices being reinforced with the way that you're approaching our schools and our young children. I wanted to ask a little bit about, you, you raised the issue of close contact. And I think that's been an issue that's been raised in particular around what the, how the definition, and so you, you've given us the, the definition from the CDC, how that applies to students outside the school building. And what I mean by that specifically is when they're getting to school and the MBTA specifically. So we know that kids are still going to be taking the MBTA to school. And we know that the definition of close contact is within six feet without a mask for more than 15 minutes. So with that context in mind, does that, how does that play into discussions that you and others, and I think this might be a discussion that bleeds into some of Mr. DePina's area, have, have approached the transportation issue?
So I don't actually know that I can, that I am probably the best person to answer some of the more specific questions related to the MBTA and their policy. I, I will say that I have a BPS student that does, that I intend to send on the MBTA to school on the days that she is working. So that is, of course, I mean, every child in Boston, you know, is definitely a concern of mine. But, you know, it's a real, that's a real, it's a reality for me as well. But I think we, that it, honestly, we just have to work with the MBTA and ensure that they are upholding the safety measures that they have put into place really throughout the closure and just really make sure to be collaborative partners and advocate for the safety and health and wellbeing of our children who will be utilizing that service in order to get to and from school at least part of their, the, part of the days in the week.
And so, you know, taking that forward with respect to the idea of contact tracing.
Oh, I apologize.
No, no, but it was, said a lot of words. The, the idea that if a student's wearing a mask, but somehow tests positive or develops symptoms, if they've been wearing a mask, then the inquiry ends around what their contacts have been, even if they're traveling through the T.
Typically, yes. So, you know, I, I think that what we, what we know is that when we have several different mitigation factors happening at the same time, it reduces that risk at, you know, by a step every si with every single factor that it, you know, is incorporated. That's why, you know, just in our classrooms, we're talking about the distancing and the mask-wearing and the hand hygiene, um and staying home when you're not feeling well and screening our students before they come in the building and providing professional development to school nurses that can then be provided to our um school-based staff. You know, so it it's one of those situations where no one thing works best alone. We need, we really do need this plan to kind, you know, to support to support the whole, the whole health and the wellness of the child. But in terms of contact tracing, yes. And I did, if you are identified as a close contact, but the person who was symptomatic was was faithfully wearing a mask during the during the period in which you can't, you know, that you're in contact, the risk is lower and some of that assessment does drop. Now, if we're talking about somebody consistently wearing a mask, it's for a very extended period of time um in a closed, you know, closed space with, you know, then then it's a little different. But, you know, for the most part, that's why we're taking these measures. That's why we're doing this multifaceted, you know, multi-layered plan for supporting that and reducing that risk of transmission.
And I really like how you lay that out, because it's essentially, you have a series of fail safes there that fill in the gaps when um we worry about transmission. You have the mask-wearing, you have the um uh the social distancing, the um the regular hand washing, and the the regular uh turning to Mr. DePina and the work in the facilities, the regular uh disinfection and sanitation uh sanitization protocols. And so um thank you for that, Ms. Salter Bennett. I'm going to turn to Sam just briefly, so that we can uh continue with the meeting. But um, Mr. DePina, you uh you walked through at the very beginning of the uh presentation uh a number of um uh the efforts that you've been making around the uh the facilities. And and so, you know, some, a couple of things jumped out at me. You've completed 121 of the 125 schools across the district uh for deep cleaning. Work remit remains in a number of schools. That is the typical um quote-unquote "summer slammer" type work, where we're building out a kitchen or um doing window swap outs. I saw some window swap outs at the Otis in East Boston earlier this week that looked great. But um, you know, we don't have a lot of people in the buildings right now that work in the schools. But we do target September 8th for the return of teachers. And we know that uh school leaders will be in the buildings before uh September 8th. So um I'll come back to the specific steps in a second. But you can, um, I believe you you've made the statement uh previously that we'll be ready for all those workers to return to those buildings on September 8th, correct?
Yes.
And anything that folks will see in the buildings in on September 8th that, you know, still need to be shaken out, um, you know, additional windows that need to become operational, um additional cleanup that needs to happen, maybe some spacing, that's that's what the, that additional time between the 8th and the 21st is is intended to, uh, correct?
Yes.
And.
We we eagerly welcome the feedback.
Absolutely. And I'm sorry if I'm cross-examining you. Not my intent. But um, you know, turning to all the work that we've done, we've identified the issues that uh that exist in our schools that need the most urgent address, uh that are in in most urgent need of addressing. And so, you know, thinking through um the replacement of the water bubblers, Ms. Uh Vice Chair Oliver Davila raised those earlier, changing out um toilet and faucet handles to ensure that um water's running um efficiently. Yes, sir.
If I can intro briefly about the faucet, it's just something I want to add and expand on. One thing that we hear a lot about, that we really ran to the ground, that folks should know, is the concern around um the length of time the faucets are actually running and activating. We intentionally had them set for like 20 seconds to shut off, to save utility costs. But what we're doing now is increasing that time, so that way, uh, when folks press down, it'll one last longer, but two, we're going to be sending out messages to folks that it's it's like uh when you're running a shower, you run the water for a little bit, then the hot water comes on. What we're finding is that because they were being shut off so soon, the hot water was never coming into the to the faucet. So we rectified that problem as well. So there will be enough um communication around those directions, but we did increase the time on the faucets as well.
Oh, that's excellent. And that's um, that's good thinking, as I know the CDC guidance has been washing for at least 20 seconds. Did sing a happy birthday twice, correct?
Right.
So i- in addition to that, you're talking about, you know, the HVAC filters that you've replaced, the purchase of 3,000 fans. And it it remind me on that, I I know Ms. Robinson asked a little, a little bit about the fans a little earlier. Part of the intention around that is to create negative air pressure. And that's what we've seen in some of the testing uh sites around the city, where uh we're trying to pull via viral load out of a building. I might be getting a little bit out of my depths with the terms that I'm using, but um that, part of that intention is to try to dissipate the air that might be circulating and or not circulating and just frankly sitting. That creates the opportunity for some of the the transmission, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So you mentioned, we'll be ready for buildings um September 8th. I should, I I almost um forgot um my my issue that I've I've raised, I think, every meeting, the cameras as well. My understanding from Mr. Uh Racine is that those cameras will be in by uh September 11th or September 12th uh in every building, so that we can continue to work on our remote and our our hybrid um uh build-out. And as we move toward uh the eventual repopulation of the schools, we will continue to work on those issues and troubleshoot as uh we have our teachers and our our student, our school leaders back in the building to to help us identify where we can continue to improve things. Sorry, it looks like you might be on mute. But in any case, I think, you know, this um uh presentation is is enormously helpful to um, you know, first bring together this team uh to let us know that, um, you know, just the the breadth and depth of the uh the workforce across BPS and across the city that's been working on these issues consistently over the entire summer, and give us a little bit more detail about what it is that we expect uh as we move into our uh the the point in time where we're asking families to give us their indication of what they'd like to see for this uh the fall. So we'll continue moving towards this decision. We thank you very much Superintendent. I know um this is our third presentation in six weeks at the school committee, but um we don't have another school committee meeting uh scheduled until September 16th. And so we'll, we'll look to work with you to um establish community fora and other modes and methods, press conferences with the mayor and such, uh to get information out to our community. And thank you once again to the team, Ms. Ford Walker. It's been great to see you. I haven't seen you in like a year. The trouble with COVID, right?
Yeah.
So uh with that Superintendent, I I want to just kick it back to you before we move on to our second report um prior to public comment, to see if you have any closing uh comments on reopening.
Well, I just want to thank the committee members for their incredible uh questions and uh thoughtfulness on this process and for and for thanking the team and recognizing their hard work. I very much appreciate that, and I recognize all of the team members here who put in, again, countless hours. And I want to thank Ms. Post for her coordination of all of the effort, as well as every department head here on the call, as well as those on my uh executive team. And then, you know, just the many teachers and volunteers and collaborators who were working on our uh school leaders, who worked on our work groups that informed these plans, um and our custodians, our facility department, and our food nutrition staff and others who uh have been giving us feedback all 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 the way, and our school nurses. So um I just want to thank everybody for for their really hard work on it.
Excellent. Well, thank you once again, folks, and we'll continue to be uh talking with you and hearing from you in uh the coming weeks. And we know you have a lot of uh important work ahead of you, but it's all in service of our city and our kids. So thank you very much. We'll move on now to our next report, uh which is a policy regarding the preparation and sharing of student incident reports and other student information with the Boston Police Department. Now, as you'll recall, that the suit, you'll recall, the Superintendent first brought this issue before the committee back in April, at which time the committee had a number of questions and suggestions about the proposed policy at that time. The Superintendent, um, I want to thank her first and foremost for taking uh time to reflect on that feedback and to uh take the initiative to put together a working group that's been composed of BPS, uh City Hall, um, excuse me, City Department uh employees and a number of our community advocates, uh including teachers and students to look at the the policy and look at ways to further improve it and make it uh more meaningful and and protective of our student body. So that working group, um, which also included the Vice Chair, so thank you, Vice Chair Oliver Davila, has met numerous times over this summer and was um was um externally facilitated. And I want to thank uh each and every participant for um their time and commitment to helping the district get this right. And thank you uh in particular, he couldn't join us tonight, but Juma Crawford and his associates for uh helping to facilitate uh these meetings and see through um the improvement of uh the policy proposal. So uh at this time, um, we have a revised policy proposal before us that is sought to uh improve upon what we saw in April and take into account then a a large number of uh the pieces of input that we received from the community during that time and from the uh community participants on the working group. And so I'm inviting Chief of Operations Sam DePina uh to present his report and uh kick it to the uh the Superintendent if she would like to uh speak any further to an introduction here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members. I'm going to invite Mr. DePina and Ms. Lazat to uh join me here in the presentation of this policy and also Vice Chair Oliver Davila, who was part of this working group up until the end and gave um gave really good uh support to this process. And I just very much appreciate your leadership and thank you for uh helping uh with this policy. As you know, this is an area which we really want to get right. We wanted to uh work with our advocates and to ensure that they felt comfortable with the policy moving forward. We put in a lot of time this summer. We did not, in the end, ag- agree on everything, uh but we did make really big strides and big progress. And I think that um everybody on the committee would say that they very much respected the process. Everybody was respectful of the process. And we um, you know, came a long way in in compromise uh to get something that I think is going to give uh me and all of us the tools to be able to ensure that um we are holding ourselves accountable to the um beliefs and practices that we espouse as a district around uh creating safe and welcoming environments for our students and ensuring that their uh their privacy is protected legally and also for their own um sense of um feeling of sa- safety. So I'm going to turn it over to uh Mr. DePina to bring us through kind of the process, give a little bit of the background and the timeline and the membership of this uh working group, and then um talk a little bit about next steps.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you for your leadership on on the issue as well. Um, and uh, thanks again, uh Vice Chair Oliver Davila as well. So just briefly speaking about the policy, um, this policy definitely builds upon the previous one that was presented in April. And it has a focus on on preparing incident reports and police reports in the sharing of those reports with Boston Police and other student information with the Boston Police. This revised policy restricts the types of conduct documented in those police reports. It ensures that reports are not created um used to protect the student um record information. It specifies the individuals who are permitted uh to share the reports. It also establishes a working group to monitor the implementation of the policy and and it also establishes training um expectations um for the policy as well.
Slide to put up, do we have the slide deck to put up or?
It's on putting that up?
Liz, Liz, do you have the slide to put that up? Or Mr. DePina?
I'll tell you what, if you give me a minute, I bet I can find it and uh project it alongside here.
Okay. Little technical difficulty, sorry. Just want to make sure Mr. DePina has it, so everybody can follow along.
And Sam, if you'd like to continue, I'll uh find this and get it up on the screen and uh just so we don't have to have folks waiting.
Sure, no problem. So I'm on the policy objective slide. And basically, the the policy, um, the revised policy is three um main objectives. The first is to ensure the um safety uh of our students, both in school and while they're participating in in school-based activities. It also um lowers the number and type of police reports um that are written that may be addressed uh more appropriately um by school administration with the use of the code of conduct. And lastly, um, it assures that protected student information is not shared through a police report. As as we mentioned, um, you know, the Superintendent created and established the working group. And the the charge of that group was to basically share perspectives and make recommendations on how to improve the policy that was created, um, initial policy that was drafted in April and presented in April. The charge of that group was to um create a policy that will be, you know, shared and approved by this body and that would direct the work um and also clarify the expectations around training with regard to how the um work is implemented. Specifically, we we also wanted to make sure that training was available around how the data is captured, stored, um and shared um externally with other with other folks. The research group, uh, I'm sorry, the working group also um looked at additional research, discussed best practices, um, and also um, you know, got feedback from external stakeholders uh and developed some of the recommendations as well. And I'll I'll briefly uh talk a little bit about the working group. And I'm also going to turn it over to Yusefie Valli, who's also here from the Mayor's Office of Immigration Advancement, who'll also discuss a little bit more about the working group. But at a high level, uh, we met um from June through August, a little over three months of engagement. And as mentioned, it was facilitated by um the Lewis Family Foundation through Juma and his team. And participating members included uh Vice Chair Oliver Davila, Superintendent Selena Miranda out of High Square Task Force, Danya Vasquez, who was our school leader um representative, um representative of voice of school leaders, Elizabeth Badger from the Pair Project, Elizabeth McIntyre from the Greater Boston Legal Services, Fatima Ahmed from the Muslim Justice League, Gloria West, who was our parent representative, Elise Tabora out of our um BPS Office of Equity, Tamani Jones, our student representative. And he had a lot of great feedback and suggestions, so thank you, uh, Tamani, just want to call that out. Lina Papagianis from Unafraid Educators, Lisa Thero, Strategies for Youth, my office. And um just to note that through my office, uh, we uh also shared the recommendations and feedback from all of our safety services, staff members um in Boston Police through my office, but they were, their feedback was definitely incorporated. Valerie Duvali from the Student Immigration Movement. And and again, Yusefie um Valli from the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Advancement. And at this time, I'll briefly turn it over to um Mr. Valli to just add a couple of comments regarding the work.
Thank you so much, Mr. DePina. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair and Superintendent uh for having me uh on here. I just want to give you a little perspective of someone who was a participating member of the working group. First and foremost, uh, safety was of utmost concern for nearly every member of the working room. Uh, of course, uh depending on where people uh stood, approaches and perspectives on that, uh on it, on how to achieve that value varied. For for me, from the, uh, as the Director of the Mayor's Office for Immigrant Advancement, as you can imagine, while we're concerned about every student's safety, we have a particular emphasis on our immigrant students uh because of barriers to equity they face on a daily basis. My department holds that, just as the mayor, um, that every student should have opportunities to thrive and should have all the resources they need, regardless of where they were born or what their immigration status is, statuses. No student should fear being criminalized and deported. With that in mind, I really, really do want to commend uh Superintendent Dr. Casilius and her team and school committee member um and Vice Chair Alex Oliver Davila for running a really strong, authentic, consultative process with this working group. Within a span of a little over two months, the Superintendent held 11 working sessions, herself being present in nearly all of them, which frankly, being into in government, I haven't seen that kind of engagement. These sessions had significant back and forth, of course, moments of tension, impasse and breakthroughs, clarity on where different parties stood and nearly continued. Clarity on where different parties stood and nearly continual adjustments to the policy. And I really felt it was the best. It was democracy at its best. Today, the policy stands in a very different place than before and doubtless, due to this process. It is a far better policy than before. I would be remiss not to thank the other working group members in the same breath as the superintendent and her team. Because each of the members put in countless hours in critique, feedback and seeking clarification. Which is what helped this policy come a long way. Juma Crawford's already been thanked and the Lewis Family Foundation. I also want to thank Headmaster Dr. Dania Vasquez, who stepped in. For the last few meetings of facilitation. Sam is going to go over the significant policy changes in this. In this, so I won't go over it, but I will just say that. The policy has significantly shifted from being overall general focused on BPS personnel to. Focus specifically on Safety Services and School Police in particular. As Sam mentioned, the incident report Safety Services can write has been reduced significantly, as has the information that can be shared with BPD. The role and involvement of school leaders, principals, headmasters and incidents or incident reports has been strengthened. Yearly auditing measures have been put in place and the creation of a working group to monitor. Implementation of the policy and ensure accountability is also there. Ultimately, the proof is in the pudding and the real success of this policy. Will be an implementation and culture change that is necessary in BPS and Safety Services. Along with changes to other complementary policies such as the MOU between BPD and BPS. As long as BPS engages the Working Group on Implementation Training and other complementary policies in the same way as it did on this policy. Which I know the superintendent is committed to. I'm confident that we'll be able to achieve the goal of safety for all students and achieve the spirit of this policy. I'll turn it back over to Mr. DePina.
Thank you, Mr. Valli. So with that, again, thanks. Thanks for all the working team members for all the hard work. And. I'd like to now stop beginning by sharing some of the key changes. So as we mentioned, this policy significantly reduced the type of SSR1 reports that our. Safety Service employees will write. Specifically, they'll be limited to. Medical emergencies, missing children and incidents that don't involve student activity. For example, if a controlled substance is found on the property. Graffiti, vandalism, those type of things. It'll be limited to that. It also. Restrict the type of. Incidents that can be written regarding misdemeanors. That can be better handled by our code of conduct. So what we'd like to be able to do is just have all misdemeanor. Crimes that don't involve weapons be handled through school discipline and not through a written police report. The only exception to that policy or that that practice is that in the events that victims would like a police report to pursue any criminal activities on their own. We'd accommodate the, we'd accommodate those those victims. Lastly, it eliminates the practice of pairing intelligence reports. These reports were written reports that were generated in order to prevent emergencies or potential crimes that we may have heard about. And again, these practices are the ones that were really went above and beyond. From the previous policy that was proposed in April. Next slide. I'd like to get into kind of what's allowed to be shared and what's not allowed to be shared at this point. So Safety Services. Employees can no longer share or read disclosed information that they obtained about students in our Aspen system. In addition, the only thing that's allowable is directory information, which includes name, grade, age and date of enrollment. What the policy also does is also identifies information that may never be shared. In any, in any type of report. That includes immigration status, citizenship, national origin. Ethnicity, native or spoken language and suspected gang affiliation. Again, these are never to be shared at all under any circumstances. Lastly, student information in this report may be shared if it's directory information based on personal knowledge. So that's, that's all that's allowed to be shared. So information that's directory information and based on personal knowledge. Next slide please. So what this also, this policy also does is it also improves the communication between. Safety Service employees, school administration and families. One of the practices and protocols that we've added was that the Safety Service employees will now need to inform school administration prior to preparing an incident report. And once that notification is made to school administration. The school administration, the school administration then has 24 hours to contact the student and family involved in the incident. To discuss that incident report, to review next steps and follow up with regard to that incident. Next slide please. With regard to who shares the information, we really limited it to a small group of people so that we can manage and control. That sharing. So what this policy does, it empowers only the chief and deputy chief of Safety Services can share incident reports. To Boston Police, but that sharing can only be done through the liaison of the Boston School, the Boston Police School Unit. And the only exception here is that in the event of health or safety emergency. The Safety Services employee can share information in order to address the emergency at hand. Next slide please. What this policy does does not prohibit or stop. Other various intervention and prevention programs that we have in conjunction with the Boston Police. These intervention and prevention strategies have been really successful through the years and have been improved upon over the years. And we don't want them to discontinue. The important thing to know here is that many of these. Intervention and prevention programs are done through parent consent. So we do have consent from parents to participate in these programs. So I'll, you see those programs listed there. I'll save time for me and those to have time for questions. Next slide please. The policy also, we did a really good job, I think, of identifying how we would make sure that there's accountability and training with regard to these changes. We agreed to conduct monthly reporting to the superintendent regarding the incidents. And then from there, we'll be monitoring it closely. In in watching live what, how the policy is being implemented. Next, we created the Safety Working Group that we discussed. It'll, it'll continue. It'll be a 12-member working group. That will continue to review the data and make recommendations based on the data we see. In that way, it'll help inform the annual presentation that that's next on the slides. So. That Safety Working Group will help inform the annual review we want to conduct. So we can assess the policy's implementation and then make any course corrections we would need policy-wise through this body. Lastly, it ensures training, training for safety employees, training for central office and school administrators. And that training will be done upon hire and then every three years. So we're really clear on kind of making sure that everyone's educated on. What to do with regard to student information sharing in general, but then specifically around this policy. Lastly, and with our equity analysis, next slide please. So with all the work we do, we closely try to align everything we do with the strategic plan. And as you see, this work is tied to two key. Elements in strategic plan, priority 1.7, which is eliminating disproportionality in implementing the code of conduct. And priority 1.8, which is develop capacity to address health and social contributor opportunity gaps. So again, this policy is aimed at reducing the number of type of police reports that are written. Especially. As it mitigates referrals to the juvenile justice system where black Latinx youth are overrepresented. And lastly, it limits the sharing of student information between BPS and BPD to show that information is only shared when required by law or deemed appropriate by the chief or deputy chief. And with that, I'll conclude this presentation and turn it back over to Superintendent for any closing remarks.
Thank you, Mr. DePina, and I'll open it up for questions or turn it back to you, Mr. Chair. Or maybe Vice Chair would like to make any comments.
Thank you, Superintendent. And I mean, I'll be repeating myself, repeating what other people have said, but I think Mr. Valli really summed it up. And I thank him for his participation. And the superintendent, we did add three additional meetings and the superintendent, she came to all the meetings. I think she left early for two of them, which I think, given everything on her plate is pretty amazing. And I do want to thank all the members who participated. I'm not going to name them because I know I'm going to forget somebody. But I thought that everyone was really respectful. Everybody was, we all had the same goal. We just want our students to be safe. And I do want to thank Juma for facilitating the getting portion and definitely Headmaster Vasquez at the end, who really. Brought us home with our thoughtful facilitation. I would just say. You know, that it's not a perfect policy and I'm not going to. You know, sit here and tell you that, but I'm going to say that it's a much, much stronger policy. It is. A policy that has oversight, which has an external oversight committee and two of the members from this, this committee will be on that. Working committee moving forward and will include some external folks as well. And there will be also an annual review of this policy. And as you saw. Mr. DePina go through the accountability piece that the superintendent will also receive like monthly. Data and information. So I think these are really strong pieces, pieces that are tied to conduct. I mean. I know that as a, you know, a Latina woman, it's very important to me. One in, one out of every four Latinos is incarcerated in Massachusetts, which has the highest rates of anywhere in the country. So for me, it is really concerning for our immigrant and our undocumented young people and our just young people of color. So we take this work really seriously. And I would say that. We have an opportunity to bring forth a much, much stronger policy, one that will have oversight, one that we can review next year. And also, I think I lost track of my, well, anyway, so I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. I just think it's a much stronger policy. I know what I was going to say. I think there's another piece of the work that needs to continue, which is the next piece of the work. When we negotiate our MOU with the Boston Police Department, which is separate from this policy. And that's a separate conversation. We were charged with making this. Policy stronger. And I feel like we compromised to the place that we we could. And I, and I feel very comfortable with that. So thank you for. For the opportunity of letting me speak.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair. And I think that really set the table for this discussion, you know, and I think all of us on this body and all of this. All of us within this district where this work, that feel the importance of this work owe you a debt of gratitude for. Participating here and leading this work. So so thank you. Leading alongside, of course, the superintendent and Mr. DePina and. The many other leaders within the district and within the community that did this work. So. I want to open it up now to other members for any questions or discussion of the policy that's been proposed. Please. Raise your hands or otherwise make yourself known for any questions that you'd like to throw out there. Looks like. We'll start with Mr. Tran and then we'll go to Ms. Robinson.
Hi, again. There is. A phrase that is commonly used in that document that I really do not understand very well. And that is the. The personal information, meaning. The person who makes the report. Can also disclose personal information regarding the. You know, the student that is to be reported. What are the criteria for personal information that that is? That is disclosed by the. By the, you know, by, by, by the person who makes the report.
Are you referring to the personal knowledge language?
Personal knowledge, I mean, yes, personal knowledge.
Right. So what personal knowledge basically means is in the course of a day, a Safety Service employee may. Have conversations with a student. He may be their coach on the softball team. And he just generally knows information about kids. So in the event there, there's an incident that occurs. And if Boston Police inquires about this particular student around a particular incident. Then that Safety Service employee is available to share information to somebody he knows. And he can't go into our system to look it up to answer the question. So that's, that's, that's the difference that helps.
Maybe Kathy Lizat might be able to speak to the legal directory information as well.
Your honor, you, Kathy.
Thanks. I'll just add to the personal observation piece that although that information isn't protected by FERPA. What this policy does is try to establish guardrails so that in order to share information based on personal knowledge. The individual can't have originally obtained it from a student record. And it has to be directly related to the purpose of the request. So a Safety Services employee can't just starts. Providing everything he or she may know about a particular student. It has to be directly related to a particular request and it has to be information. That the employee knows. Based on observation or conversation and cannot have originally come from a student record. The other, the other piece that can be shared is directory information. And if some of you are familiar with. The pieces of information that constituted directory information last year, this year for the 2021 school year. We have severely limited the types of information that are considered directory. So now it is only student name, age, grade and dates of enrollment at BPS.
Thank you for highlighting that, Ms. Lizat, because that is something that was part of the original proposal back in April and represented a very big shift in the way that we do business and. And represents a narrowing of the type of information that would ever be available through the directory exception. So. Thank you for highlighting that. And thank you for identifying that in the first draft, Superintendent. Mr. Tran, do you have further questions? Thank you. We're going to move on to Ms. Robinson.
Again, thank you for the work. Thank you for all the hard work that has gone on for so many months to work on this. I have a question that may be slightly not right on this target, but as I read through the report, one thing that I continued to notice. That there was never any information, any, any reference to teachers. It talked about administrators. And I guess. My question is often something that may have occurred in a classroom that moves and escalates. An issue to a point where any of these other things are taking place. How are we moving back down the line and making sure that. We are providing training to teachers, you know, around our discipline processes or other things to make sure we don't even get to the point where. A particular issue needs to be addressed. And so I was just wondering why teachers are not mentioned anywhere within the policy.
Sure. So in implementing our code of conduct, teachers play a role, obviously, school administrators play a role. And the students and family play their role and have. Legal rights around code of conduct implementation. So the training that we do and make available around our code of conduct work also extends to teachers. And we wanted to make sure that teachers and administrators at the school are more trained upon the code of conduct because we want to create that bright line. So that any misdemeanor things that occur is being handled through code of conduct and disciplinary route through that procedures. And not really tie so much into writing a report that the Safety Service officers will. Work with the school administration on specifically. So we want to just create that separation so that our Safety Service officers are focused just on. The bigger crimes that may need to be reported and the less crimes that we want to, you know, obviously decriminalize should be handled by the school and that includes teachers. So they'll be trained on code of conduct. Justice practices and those kind of pieces.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Other members with questions? Ms. O'Neil, looks like you're making a move.
Another question but more comments. Superintendent, thank you for stepping back and taking a fresh approach on this. I think we're seeing the benefits of compromise and getting people around the table who. Think differently about this and bring fresh approaches. So thank you for collaborating. And Vice Chair Oliver Davila, thank you so much for your expertise on this. I. I value your input and the work that you did on it and learn by listening to your thought process on it. So thank you both for the work on this. So thank you both for the work on this.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neal. Any other questions, comments? Well, I'd echo what Ms. O'Neal had to say. And, you know, in, in particular, thanking the, the folks that came from the community and, and helped us out, helped out the superintendent specifically with this working group. Having the, the participation from Unafraid Educators, the Student Immigrant Movement, who I believe we're going to hear from those groups a little bit later in comments, as well as Muslim Justice League, PAIR, the Immigrant Rights Project, really gave us a, a well-rounded approach and really informed where we, we got to with these improvements. I know we didn't go as far as we, the, some of the, the groups we were working with in the community wanted us to go. And I wondered, Mr. DePina, if you could, or Dr. Casilius, if you might be able to address where some of those gaps may still lie. And I, I suppose, you know, before you answer that, I did hear Ms., excuse me, the Vice Chair speak a little bit earlier to the, the fact that we have a working group that's going to be ongoing. And we have work that's yet to, to be accomplished with BPD in the memorandum of understanding about how police engage with our schools. And, and so I'd expect that some of this work that might be viewed as unfinished by the community is work that can be taken on in, in that ongoing working group engagement.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the three big areas of kind of where we didn't quite get there, and I'll ask Ms. Lizat to be more specific in the answers. But it was one around just the different types of incidents and the mandates of when, what would, what would be and would not be reported. The second is how we store the reports. And I think that's more of a BPD issue than it is a Boston School Police issue because we're very careful with that. And then the third, I think, is just kind of the next step. You know, just generally, at least this was for sure on KIMANI and the BSAC group of youth who really, you know, would like, like to not see, you know, the school police at all. And so I think that, you know, they were, you know, trying to separate between this policy, which is a really great step around data privacy with the overall kind of concern that they have around safety services in general in schools. And so just trying to, you know, take the real purity of the charge that we have in front of us with this policy and separate it for the students with maybe the next step of work, which is how do we reform and think about our school safety services so that students do feel safe in their schools? And then the MOU, which Ms. Oliver Davila had talked about, so.
You know, we touched on directory information a little bit earlier. It's one item that had been improved in the original draft that we saw back in, in April. But I wonder, a lot of the work that is reflected in the revised policy, I believe in many respects reflects the current practices within the district. And so maybe if you can talk us through some of the issues that represent an improved policy that we would be voting on at the next meeting. But nevertheless, our, our changes that we've made and implemented in our schools or intending to implement in the fall, regardless of where we're at with this policy.
So the policy strengthens what we are already doing. So this year, you know, we, we were, we clamped down pretty, pretty hard on it. You know, Yusefie came out and spoke to our principals and we did a training around it, trained on the Trust Act that the mayor had in the city, talked really around FERPA and did really a lot of training on FERPA to make sure that our employees understood and knew their responsibility around data privacy. And then making sure that people knew that we were going to hold them accountable for that as part of the training. So I think that that has also helped us. And we've also been doing auditing and just, you know, checking. I don't know if Mr. DePina, I see you shaking your head. If you have any other feedback on what we've done this past year. And then this policy would just strengthen that level of accountability and oversight and ability to do the auditing that we need to do.
You, you're correct, Superintendent. I was just nodding because there was a lot of work that we've accomplished. And this definitely strengthens it and, and makes some improvements to that work. So thank you.
Well, excellent. Well, I know, again, there's been a lot of work that's gone into this. And I appreciate the time that the district has taken to focus on this issue that's so important to so many of the students and, and community members across our district. And I want to thank, I, I didn't get to thank Mr. Valley for joining us this evening as well when he spoke earlier. But thank you to Mr. Valley from City Hall for joining us this evening and for giving him, giving us so much of his time over the last few, few months. But in any case, we have a vastly improved proposal that's reflective of a number of the issues that the community brought to us back in April. And I really thank the superintendent for driving this home and Mr. DePina for, for leading this work. Because we know you don't have anything else going on right now, of course. But in any case, we will look forward to hearing a little bit more from the community and general public comment. And certainly, once, once we adjourn this evening, if folks want to reach out to us in the interim, we'll be looking forward to taking action on this proposal at our next meeting. So thank you once again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have 36 speakers this evening. So in accordance with school committee policy, time will be reduced to two minutes per person. And I remind you, when you have 30 seconds remaining, those who require interpretation services will receive additional two minutes. Speakers may not re-sign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged and can be sent to my attention to distribute to the committee. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure you were signed into Zoom with the same name that you used to sign up for public comments. And that will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin this evening with Councilor Nisa Asavi George, Valeria Dovale, Elizabeth McIntyre, and Robert Jenkins. Counselor George with us. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Anissa Asavi George, and I'm an at-large Boston City Councilor, former BPS teacher, and most importantly, a parent of four BPS students. There's a lot to consider this evening as it's been a really long presentation on a number of really important topics offered for discussion and conversation. And I appreciate the questions of school committee members this evening. I'm here mainly to discuss opening of schools, but will submit additional testimony regarding the other topics discussed this evening. Regarding school reopening, I urge the district to make a decision sooner rather than later regarding the reopening of schools so BPS families and staff can plan for the coming school year. We are just about a month out from the first day of school and have had, and have no idea what school will look like. Families need time to decide if they want to opt into remote learning or hybrid learning. They need time to assess whether or not they can provide the necessary at-home support, particularly if parents are working full-time too. Teachers need time to craft the appropriate lesson plans and learning supports for their students. And BPS needs to know if students will need bus transportation. There are so many things on hold while the district decides our next step. The start of this school year is chaotic and challenging, and our BPS community needs some clarity. I strongly urge that the district do away with a simultaneous teaching plan. Remote learning is challenging enough, and teachers learned a great deal about how to do it better this past spring. Asking young students to remember to transport their devices to and from school so that their in-person learning can be in front of a computer too doesn't make sense. If the district is going with in-person learning, let it be actually in-person and not just more screen time. I asked that the district, I asked the district to rethink its approach to the start of the school year. Let's start by meeting the needs of our most vulnerable student who need in-person learning. Phase in our start to in-person learning so that it is safe as possible and meets the needs of those students and families. Our highest needs students, special education kids, ELL kids, low-income students, students experiencing homelessness who need and want in-person school should be prioritized. Teachers, supports, student support teams, and specialists should work with our families to identify our needs and who needs in-person learning the most. Let's make sure our schools are safe for them as well. As the school year unfolds, we will undoubtedly be faced with more challenges and uncertainties. We need the Boston Public Schools to be clear, communicative, and responsive to our entire community. Thank you very much for all of your work and for the, I think, extensive and thoughtful conversation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Valeria Dovale, followed by Elizabeth McIntyre.
Hello.
Yeah, welcome.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak today. And as a member of the working group, thank you again for including the student in the room. And I want to speak today about what it was like working with everyone and also the remaining concerns that we have surrounding the policy as it currently stands. As a member of the working group, I want to make clear that, you know, I, I do appreciate and we are very thankful to BPS and the superintendent and all of the committee members for joining the table and for convening the table. At the same time, I do believe that this was a community effort. And this table happened because of community effort and because the community was outspoken about a very important issue. I also want to be clear that we can't necessarily say that this policy is better because there was no policy before. A policy that dealt with student privacy did not exist. And so right now we are creating one, and we could create it the best that we can. So a lot of remaining issues, like we are worried that this policy actually gives more power to the Boston Police Department and more discretion instead of actually regulating. I am surprised that there was mention of BPS having a relationship with BPD when questions were raised at the working group about it, but there was no explanation on what was the BPD stance on the policy or any commentary on the policy. And so I do feel that that's a lack of transparency. And I do hope that as we move forward, this will not be the case and that there will be full transparency on all sides of what we're willing to push for and do for the safety and the security and the prosperity of our students. Because that's what really matters here, is not what each organization, we're not pushing a then agenda. We're not pushing a personal agenda. This is for our students and for our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Elizabeth McIntyre, followed by Robert Jenkins and Lisa Thoreau.
Thank you, Mr. Valley.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth McIntyre, and I am a senior attorney at Greater Boston Legal Services. We represent young people of color in school discipline and special education cases. I'm here tonight on behalf of particularly my clients with disabilities. The district's proposed policy fails to protect my clients from being criminalized by Boston School Police and the Boston Police Department. I do want to be clear that I recognize and appreciate the deep work that the district has done on this issue over the past three months. As a member of the working group that the district convened to develop this policy, I saw BPS leadership lean into understanding the concerns of the working group. Unfortunately, the district's proposal continues to give school police authority to criminalize students for developmentally typical behavior. Under this proposal, Boston School Police will continue to create Boston Police Department records called 1-1s. These are law enforcement records that expose students to a variety of terrifying legal consequences. For example, I have represented a 12-year-old autistic boy who was running in circles in the school foyer and crying, saying that he wanted to call his mom. He pushed a chair in the foyer out of his path as he ran. The chair fell over and landed near a school police officer. I represented a nine-year-old girl with PTSD who became anxious because she thought a classmate was staring at her. She refused to get on the bus with that classmate. And when a bus monitor tried to take her hand to pull her onto the bus, she slapped the bus monitor's hand away and ran back into school. A 14-year-old who elbowed the classmate out of the way when the classmate leaned on his locker and prevented him from being able to open it. The district's proposal tonight would continue to allow the creation of BPD reports and the harm that follows them in each of those cases. Earlier this evening, we heard Mr. DePina state that misdemeanors would not be written up as 1-1s unless they involve weapons. Unfortunately, that is not true. The policy in Section 3A1 as currently written allows 1-1s to be written up even for simple assault. No young person should be criminalized for developmentally typical conduct or conduct related to their disability. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Jenkins, and he'll be followed by Lisa Thoreau and Nora Paul Schultz.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre.
Good, good evening, all. I would like to commend the superintendent, her team, the BPS team, school committee, city councilors, the mayor, the whole community involved in this process. This is a very trying process. We are going through a very trying time throughout the city of Boston. I will be brief. Transportation, I would suggest working with the MBTA to have chartered buses from various stops to various schools as much as possible. Because social and safe distancing, as I stated before, with sixth to 12th graders traveling will be impossible on the single buses. Also, you've done a great job in making sure that the schools are safe and clean. But you have to reiterate to students, I'm out in the community and I'm social and safe distancing, wear a mask. I would say all the teenagers I encounter, out of 100%, 75 to 80% of them do not wear masks at all. That's an issue that you can't control when they're outside the building. We have to keep on continuing to promote that. Around also too, after-school programming, I haven't seen that yet. And I know it's very hard to do because no visitors are allowed in the buildings. But again, what are parents going to do? What are their alternatives? Another alternative, I mean, another issue that I do see because I've worked in the schools as a parent professional with the younger grades on cleanliness. How are you going to monitor to these youngsters when they do bathroom trips? Because throughout the day, they are, they, they do travel by themselves, certain grades, you know, maybe third of grades on up. Making sure to ensure that the cleanliness part is going on and monitoring that. Also too, on the buses, bus monitors, I know you don't have a lot of them, but that's another concern. But I know BPS will work with that. But there were some unknowns. One more unknown is the November elections. A lot of our schoolhouses are polling sites. That has to be taken into consideration. It won't affect the start of the school year because the state primaries are September 1st. But, you know, and so there'll be no, nobody in the buildings. So again, I would just like to continue that. On the plans, you know, you got to make a choice on how this COVID virus goes. So looking at everything, continue, I will continue to work with the districts I have. I've been on a number of community roundtables. I will continue to do that as a CAC member and as a school parent slash school site council, monitor for the district. So again, great job. We all have to do it together. So everybody have a good evening, stay safe, enjoy the rest of the summer, and let's just continue to work together.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Our next speaker is Lisa Thoreau.
Thank you very much to the school committee. I want to thank Dr. Casilius, and I've been an advocate for 38 years. I don't think in that time I've ever seen a leader spend the time, make the effort, and commit herself to community engagement as Dr. Casilius has. I applaud many aspects of this policy and have written comments that I've sent to the committee. I applaud the fact that we are no longer going to share key information with the brick, ice, or Boston Police Department officers and that we are clear about the legal status of schools. and that we are clear about the legal status of school safety officers and are calling them that instead of school police. I also applaud that we have created some audit systems. Where I remain a bit concerned is Section 3A1 as Elizabeth McIntyre mentioned. What this provision states right now is kids committing the most minor infractions will be at risk of being criminalized instead of treated by the school code of conduct. I find that disturbing for the reasons Elizabeth mentioned, especially because we know that schools tend to lead to arrests of youth with special needs are much higher, four times higher than arrests for kids with other needs. We also are a little concerned about the number of databases of information the Boston Public Schools have. We can't get a precise fix on them and it would be great to understand that better. And as Mrs. Robinson pointed out, we have recommended to Dr. Cassilius that this training on the new policy include school administrators and teachers. I would like to end by noting that many of the discussions focused on whether or not there should be police in schools. And I'd like to cite the superintendent of the Seattle Public Schools who said this presence of an armed officer prohibits many students and staff from feeling fully self and welcome in our buildings. I think that needs to be considered again in this context and going forward with the MOU with the Boston Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thoreau. Our next speaker is Nora Paul Schultz, should be followed by Laura Rotolo and Ashley Clerge.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Nora Paul Schultz and I'm a BPS teacher and one of the leaders of Unafraid Educators. I want to address the district's policy regarding sharing student information with the Boston Police Department. At the August 15th school committee meeting, I testified with others to express the need for a strong policy, the Learn Without Fear policy, to regulate the information shared with BPD. The policy before you tonight is still lacking the strong criteria that protects students students that is, exists in this Learn Without Fear policy. As a member of the Student Data Working Group and as a teacher who cares deeply about her students and young people throughout Boston in general, I cannot support the policy present, presented today because it's still, it's still too easily allows for the criminalization of young people. The current policy allows for BPD 1.1 reports to be written under a broad set of circumstances. Let us be clear, a BPD 1.1 report is a Boston Police Department report that is entered directly into BPD's system when it is written. There is no oversight by any individual, including the head of school, to review the report before it's submitted. Once it's submitted to BPD, BPS currently does not have any means to review or revise the report. As we know from history and you'll hear from others, these can then become accessible to federal law enforcement agencies, including FBI and ICE. This is scary to me. The real question is what is the role of police officers in our schools? Are they a mechanism, police reports in our schools? Are they a mechanism for criminalizing students for normal teenage behavior or misbehavior? Or are they only for the most extreme situations? I dream of a day that our school district views them for the latter, but I fear that with the policy on the table, it is still the former. We are continuing to use police reports to punish students and cause transgression to lead to the further criminalizations of black and brown young people in our care. This is not something I can report, support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Rotolo, should be followed by Ashley Clerge.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Laura Rotolo and I'm a staff counsel and community advocate at the American Civil Liberties Union of Massachusetts. And I'm here on behalf of our more than 10,000 members and supporters in Boston. This policy, this privacy policy that I'd like to testify about tonight is the result of many months of work and it has certainly come a very long way. So I do want to thank the BPS team and the advocates who have been working so hard on this complicated but incredibly important issue. And I want to mention quickly four areas that we believe require further strengthening. First regards the 1.1 reports. As was previously mentioned, the list of incidents for which 1.1 reports may be written is still broad enough to cover activity that is not illegal and to activity that could unfairly criminalize students, especially students with disabilities who may present behaviors that fall into these categories. Instead of those categorizations, the Learn Without Fear policy proposed by SIM and Unafraid Educators takes a different approach. The policy hinges on the true gravity of the event rather than its traditional criminal law classification. And we believe that that is a better approach. Second, while there are safeguards before a 1.1 report can be shared, incident reports, which are created by the Department of Safety Services, can be shared freely. And this may allow the same information to be shared in a different way without important safeguards. Third, the language around intelligence really requires clarification. While the definition section suggests that intelligence reporting is prohibited, there is no outright prohibition. And several sections seem to allow intelligence reporting to continue to happen. And lastly, language on reporting must be strengthened so that we do report the race and ethnicity of students involved in these reports. We simply cannot measure what we don't track. And in order to fulfill the mission of being an anti-racist school system, we must track the race and ethnicity of students involved in these incidents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Should be followed by Mike Heisman, Max Kennedy and Ruby Reyes.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right. So 97,000, that's the number of children who were infected with COVID at the end of July from the handful of districts that reopened. More than 25% of our city's population is born outside of the United States. Of those who are children, student information will continue to be shared without protections. What do these two scenarios have in common? Our children. One of my favorite proverbs says, if you want to see how well your village is doing, look at the children. So how is Boston doing? Let's take a look at our children. Marty Walsh is gearing up the city and trying to coerce us into in-person teaching in a hybrid model that puts its children and staff into buildings with little to no ventilation, even with these protections and protocols that were just shared tonight. The solutions the second draft outlines are a joke in response to raised concerns. Not because they're terrible in theory, but because anyone who has attended or worked in a BPS school knows any protections the district promises is laughable. The situation we're in is due to decades of unfulfilled promises from the district. And with a few weeks out to the start of school, we know for a fact that we will be sent into unsanitary, unsanitary, excuse me, unsafe environments if we return as a hybrid model. To add insult to injury, the district wants to push forward with the student information sharing policy that leaves students vulnerable to ICE by still allowing this information to be shared through a loophole. And let's be, let's be clear as to what happens at an ICE detention center for our children. We know our kids will be locked up in crowded cages during a global pandemic where they'll not only contract COVID, more likely than not, but will be sprayed with toxic chemicals and treated worse than animals. I implore the Boston Public School Committee to not remain neutral in the face of very clear oppression. When you take on an important role such as this for our city, you are not just in control over the lives of children, but for the future of Boston. What will you say to others in 10 years when they ask you about this period in time? How did you help people? Or how did your silence hurt others? Did your silence kill children? I urge every member of this committee to take a public stance against hybrid and to support the adoption of Learn Without Fear and put pressure on Marty Walsh to make the clear moral choice that puts people over politics. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Heisman.
Hello, everybody. Mike Heisman, Dorchester, Member of BEJA. The Boys and Girls Club's window of land that had belonged to the McCormick School demonstrated once again that forces invisible at these meetings are more important to the school department and school committee than the strong opposition expressed during public comments of the last two meetings. While a majority of the members of the school committee expressed major concerns about this opposition, this did not stop Chairman O'Connell and Mr. O'Neill from aggressively pushing through this proposal. The incidents with the police, just some brief comments. I'm appreciative of the progress that has been made. As we've already heard in the beginning of this testimony, some of the groups that are representing the interest of the students have major concerns. So I'm asking that the school committee, a school department, return to the table and to come up with a better policy. I fully support the BTU's proposal to open schools remotely with a phase-in return into safe facilities for those children in most need of in-person services. This is the plan will be the safest for our children, our school department workers and the community. The sooner the school system decides to follow the BTU's plan, the more time there'll be for a successful remote opening and a high-quality learning experience for our children. A successful start of the school year requires the active collaboration of all the stakeholders. The recent demonstration outside of Boston City Hall by the unions demonstrates the continued failure of Dr. Cassilius to work closely with these unions. We do not, this is Boston and some parts of the city, and especially in the wealthier, whiter parts of the city, Corona is much more under control. In areas where large numbers of our black and brown residents live, especially in East Boston, the virus continues to infect many residents. My wife and I live in Uppens Corner in Dorchester, which is another hot zone. I haven't seen an equity lens proposal. I hope that the school committee will support the BTU's plan. If you try and open the schools, this is premeditated murder. Lots of people are going to be infected.
Thank you, Mr. Heisman. You're past your time. Thank you. Who's next, Ms. Sullivan?
Next, Max Kennedy. He'll be followed by Ruby Reyes and Melissa Carmona.
Hello, my name is Max Kennedy and I'm a 12th grade math teacher at Margarita Muniz Academy, where I've taught for four years. In April, I testified in front of the school committee to say that the student privacy policy draft brought forth by the district was woefully inadequate for ensuring the safety of my students because it allowed school police officers to share incident reports with the Boston Police Department regarding incidents that should be handled as routine school disciplinary matters. We know that these types of incident reports have been shared with federal immigration authorities, putting our students in deportation. I'm disappointed to be back here again to say that the policy at hand is once again deeply insufficient to address this problem. Once again, the proposed policy allows school police to submit incident reports to the Boston Police Department and the district has once again failed to put in place meaningful oversight regarding the nature of these reports or who BPD shares these reports with. It is absolutely essential that the district adopt the complete Learn Without Fear policy. A clear and complete policy drafted with, through the collaboration of Unafraid Educators, the Student Immigrant Movement, the American Civil Liberties Union and the Muslim Justice League and other impacted community members. There is absolutely no excuse for the district to continue bringing insufficient policies to this committee when we know exactly what it would take to keep our most vulnerable students safe from predatory federal immigration enforcement. As we work so hard to plan for a safe start of the school year, please do not neglect this crucial work. Please demand that the district implement a policy that truly protects our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Ruby Reyes.
Good afternoon. My name is Ruby Reyes. I'm the director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance. Since school buildings closed in March, we've had six months to respond to the pandemic. BPS parents, students, educators, bus drivers, nurses and principals have experienced a lack of communication, far from the transparency that we have been promised. BPS leadership has instead spent time destroying outdoor green space at the McCormick Endeavor Schools and now creating an information sharing policy that continues to endanger students because information is still being shared with BPD, thus brick and ICE. BEJA has shared feedback with BPS leadership that includes community voices and complete with suggestions, concerns, creative solutions that have not included, have not been included in the reopening plans. We know the majority of our aging school buildings are not safe. BPS leadership needs to leverage community spaces that are safe. We need to develop a decision-making body made up of parents, students, educators, nurses, principals and community groups at each school to be able to understand, manage and develop thoughtful responses to the rapidly changing needs of this disease and the situation. We have been providing suggestions and put our hands on the deck for the past six months at numerous community engagement meetings that the superintendent has counted towards one-sided communication. BEJA endorses a plan that supports the majority of students remain remote and provide in-person services to students who desperately need them. More importantly, these in-person services need to be provided in spaces that are safe, which can include schools, community spaces and homes. We do not trust BPS leadership to provide safe spaces in the majority of our schools. Last month, Build BPS Stakeholders Group asked the BPS administration to carry out an equity analysis of the impact of school opening options on different racial and ethnic groups. We asked who's hurt. This week, East Boston science teacher Go Sasaki did an analysis and discovered that the COVID risk for BPS students is much higher than the risk to the average Boston resident because BPS students come disproportionately from high COVID neighborhoods. Even before Sasaki's calculations, it is possible, is it possible that BPS leaders were unaware that the COVID metrics in East Boston are worse than in the city as a whole? And that BPS students are more likely to come from hard-hit communities than the average resident. The BPS administration constantly talks about equity, but clearly did not look at the reopening alternatives through an equity lens. Once again, we call upon BPS leaders to conduct a serious equity analysis of reopening plans and let equity guide their actions, not just their words. Who's hurt? Logging the number of community engagements.
Ms. Reyes, would you please summarize your past two minutes? Thank you.
Start listening to what people are saying and stop wasting time making decisions that actively harm students, including giving away of green space and upholding hiring policy that has a reason for student deportation.
Ms. Reyes, you're past your two minutes. Please summarize. Thank you.
I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melissa Carmona, should be followed by Becky McLean and Samantha Laney. Melissa Carmona. Becca McLean.
Hello.
Hello. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Becca McLean. I'm a middle school teacher at the Condon in South Boston and I'm a Jamaica Plain resident. I'm here tonight to raise my concerns about the role of Boston School Police in our schools. This is an urgent concern that many students, families, community organizers, educators and lawyers have voiced for years. There is evidence that shows that student reports and information shared by Boston School Police led to students being criminalized for developmentally appropriate teen behaviors. The privacy policy that was presented tonight allows for exactly this type of information sharing and it is unacceptable. Every good teacher knows that relationships with students and family come even before academics. We have to know who our students are before we can figure out how they best learn. When our students walk into our classrooms, they bring their histories, their brilliant personalities, their hopes and dreams. However, some of my students know that it is not safe for them to bring their full selves into a BPS classroom with our current policies around what information is shared with BPD and therefore federal law enforcement such as ICE and FBI. They feel as if they have to hide who they are in order to protect their loved ones from incarceration and deportation. It is simply wrong to put this burden on students and families, not to mention that learning becomes impossible under these fearful circumstances. When I found out that despite incredible activism by educators, students and community members, the school committee would be pushing through a student privacy policy that still leaves students vulnerable to law enforcement, I was so angry. Even just tonight, I have heard so much talk about the anti-racist practices being developed by BPS, but I have yet to see them. In June, educators held restorative circles with students to process the vicious murders of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor by law enforcement. We received promises and commitments to ending the school-to-prison pipeline in our own communities and yet this policy still allows school police officers to write BPD 1.1 reports that criminalize students. It doesn't matter how much Ibram X. Kendi you read if you are still turning student information over to ICE. If we don't address our policies that enact structural racism and xenophobia onto our students, we are simply painting Black Lives Matter or Immigrant Lives Matter over the street without fixing the foundation. BPS policies have led to the incarceration and deportation of our youth based on limited and inaccurate evidence provided by Boston School Police. We need to walk the walk when it comes to anti-racism in our schools. The first right step is to adopt the Learn Without Fear policy in its entirety. My students deserve to bring their full selves to my classroom. Do what's right.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Samantha Laney, followed by Russ Weiss Erwin, Anthony Melvin and Marta Bousmar.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. My name is Samantha Laney and I teach fifth grade at the Holmes Innovation School. I've been to a number of school committee, city council and BPS meetings avidly discussing the need to start the school year virtually, which is still very much lives-at-stake levels of true. There were and still are many concerning pieces of information, including the presentation tonight, specifically surrounding the fact that although there is great accommodation for choice for families, concerns for teacher health have again been ignored. But tonight I would like to address something else that the school committee has a more active choice in. active choice in. On April 15th, a new student privacy policy was proposed. I understand and appreciate that there have been ongoing discussions and compromises being made surrounding this policy. However, as the policy stands tonight, it doesn't do enough to protect our students. For years, Boston Public Schools has been sharing student information with BPD, and as we've seen, this can have horrible repercussions. This breach of trust affects all of our students, but especially our black and brown students who, as we know, already have a more complicated and strained relationship with law enforcement outside of school. To bring that concern into school as well is anything but equitable. Personally, I am confused why we even have police officers in schools. However, I understand that's not what's being voted on tonight. As it stands, BPD can write these incident reports and then deny access to them by the school. Let's remember that any incident report filed is about a child's behavior. As other constituents have already expressed, students should not be criminalized for developmentally appropriate misbehavior. I am a teacher who has had chairs thrown at me, students cuss at me, and even the occasional fists thrown at me. This doesn't mean these children are criminals or that I would ever consider involving law enforcement by any means. They are kids, and as we know, one interaction with the criminal justice system can create an otherwise non-existent recurring relationship, especially for our most at-risk students and students of color. The purpose of a privacy policy is to protect students' privacy, not allow selective access to their private information. I urge you to reconsider some of the still remaining issues of this policy before approving it, because if we're going to continue to toss the word equitable around, we need to make sure that it's not being used as an empty buzzword, but rather a true reflection of the actions being taken within the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Russell Weiss Erwin.
Good evening. Um, all right. So my name is Russell Weiss Erwin, and I'm a middle school Spanish language arts and ethnic studies teacher at the Sarah Greenwood School. I live in Dorchester. First of all, why are we talking about the Boston Public Schools' privacy policy right now? Why is this even part of the school committee agenda in August when we don't yet know whether school will be opening safely and remotely and when many educators, students, parents, and others are not focused on this issue? I appreciate very much the work that has gone into this new policy, but if we know it doesn't go far enough to keep our students safe and we know this is not, yeah, this is not being done in a way that is like accessible to the broader community, why are we considering it for adoption? The school committee should not be making educators and families fight for our students' safety from surveillance and policing at the same time that we're fighting for their safety from coronavirus and an unsafe restart to school. What you should do with regard to student privacy is to adopt the comprehensive Learn Without Fear policy that the Boston Teacher Union, Unafraid Educators Committee, and the Student Immigrant Movement have put forward. But beyond the timing of this proposal, the substance of the proposed policy, privacy policy, falls well short of what Boston needs and deserves. We need an ironclad policy that strongly supports and protects every student in the Boston Public Schools from the school-to-prison pipeline, whether that pipeline ends in a literal prison, an immigration detention, or deportation, or in generalized surveillance and unfreedom. This is not a hypothetical issue. We've already seen tragic cases where Boston Public Schools have shared information that led to deportation. The most high-profile case of an East Boston high school student in 2017 was falsely labeled as a gang member. It disgusts me that the district administration is pushing a policy that would not do everything we can to prevent this kind of thing from happening. This policy continues to allow school police to write BPD 1.1 reports. They can take vague or incomplete information and then put it permanently and unalterably in BPD records that follow a student for years to come. This can set up students for more severe punishments or surveillance in the future. Additionally, school police would still be allowed to communicate private information about students and informal communication with BPD, which could have the same effect. Finally, it fails to require BPS to provide interpretation for families regarding private information sharing. This is totally unacceptable. I teach immigrant students, and I do everything I can to help their families get what they need in a city that is often hostile towards them. I teach them to stand up for themselves and what they believe in and to stand against injustice where they see it. How could I do that work with a straight face if I wasn't doing everything I could to fight back against policies from our district that put them at risk? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Anthony Melvin, followed by Marta Bausmer and Daniela Pachowski.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Anthony Melvin. I'm a resident of Mattapan, a parent of two Boston Public School students, and I'm also a BPS teacher at a high school that exclusively serves immigrant students and their families. I'm giving testimony this evening because I'm concerned about how school incident reports have been made accessible to law enforcement, and I don't think the current policy in front of you today is strong enough to prevent incidents like what happened at East Boston High School where routine discipline matter led to a student's deportation. Times have been tough for our immigrant students. Their communities are disproportionately impacted by this pandemic, and they've had to deal with the scapegoating and anti-immigrant rhetoric and policies of the Trump administration. To help our students cope, teachers and staff at my school have created Know Your Rights workshops. We've brought in immigration lawyers, and as a history teacher, I've discussed federalism and the 10th Amendment and how because of them, schools and communities can be safe spaces. But with what happened in East Boston, my credibility, our credibility with immigrant students, has taken a hit. We as teachers, schools, and districts need to protect our students. We all know how crucial social emotional health is to academic success. As teachers, staff, and administrators, we need to have solid, secure relationships with our students. It makes our mission that much harder if our students feel like they can't confide in us, especially now as we're trying to begin a school year in a pandemic. So with that said, I call on the district to do four things. One, create crystal-clear policy that ensures that routine school discipline issues do not become law enforcement issues. Two, school police must receive training on this policy. If someone does become a law, if something does become a law enforcement issue, then three, students' families need to be notified in their native language about what is happening before any reports are sent anywhere. And finally, four, there needs to be oversight over this whole process to make sure students are protected, and that means the community needs to be a part of that process. Please look to the Learn Without Fear policy developed by the Student Immigrant Movement and the BTU's Unafraid Educators for a more robust policy than what has been presented today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marta Bausmer.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. Yes, my name is Marta Bausmer. I'm Boston-born and raised here. I've lived here my whole life. I'm a mom to three children. One is a recent graduate, class of 2020 for BPS, also a school nurse in Boston Public Schools, and I have been for the past decade. I have a master's degree I got after three and a half years of research project and a thesis, so I know how to follow the science and I know how to research, and I really want science to guide us too in this decision. So I keep hearing this, that science will guide us. What I truly question is this: Does science in fact say that windows that open in a classroom do in fact provide the adequate ventilation to seriously reduce the risk of COVID-19 being transmitted? I'm asking this question because what I understand the science to be is this: COVID-19, highly transmissible airborne virus, the ability to bypass face coverings, travel up to 16 feet in the air, linger in the air anywhere from minutes to hours. The only way to truly ventilate a room with COVID-19 in it is to ensure that the COVID-19 particles, airborne particles, travel through an HVAC with a HEPA filter prior to coming into contact with another person. That fact and that research and that science scares me. I don't know what the science is that BPS is following, but I feel like people need to know what that is. I'm urging the superintendent and the mayor to listen to the students. I have a decade of students behind me who trust me. I contacted a few dozen students. Out of the 30-plus students I contacted, three of them wore a mask, they told me. They're all teenagers age 14 and older. They informed me that they definitely don't wear masks, not when they're playing basketball, not when they're out with their friends, not when they're hanging with even family sometimes, bike riding around the city, just chilling. They said the only time that they would wear a mask is if they felt like they needed to to go into a store. They said they would in the school building, of course. They said, "No problem, Nurse B," but they said, "Hey, I've got to confide in you. We won't do it when we leave." They said, "Yeah, it's going to be scary to go back into buildings." These are the students, okay? So now with that information, I think it's absolutely positively too dangerous to go back into the school buildings because I'm scared for students and staff and family in my community, Boston, I've lived in my whole life, to come into contact with this. So I urge you to please think about the reopening plan and go fully remote. Thank you so much tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniela Pedakowski, and she'll be followed by Elizabeth Badger. Welcome.
Can you hear me? Hello? Yes, hi. Hi, my name is Daniela Pedakowski, and I teach 5th grade ESL at the Donald McKay School in East Boston. First of all, as others have mentioned regarding the student privacy policy, I'm concerned that we are still criminalizing our children when routine school discipline can put a child into the hands of police, as with the BPD 1.1 reports. And furthermore, my understanding is that under this policy, school police will still be able to share student information, such as suspicion of gang affiliation outside of an incident report, even using channels like unofficial email or phones. So I urge the school committee not to accept the policy as is, but either to adopt the Learn Without Fear policy or work to fill these important gaps. In our school system, where more than 3/4 of our students are black and brown, we need to be very careful that our school policies treat our students as the full humans, full human young people as they are, not as potential criminals that centuries of systemic racism and some of the current provisions in this policy have painted them to be. My second point is about the BPS second draft reopening plan presented today. Our schools have been historically underfunded, and the facilities at my school in particular, although I'm not, no, we're not unique in this regard, are already environmentally unsafe and provide many obstacles to student learning. I'm talking about our windows that don't open widely enough for a breeze, only one handwashing sink on our floor, and it's in a adult bathroom with no windows, I might add, and our one boys' and girls' bathroom that's shared amongst, at this point, 800 students ages 4 to 15. The superintendent mentioned earlier that she hears our concerns about these issues, but these are being fixed, but there's no transparency detailing what made our, what is making our windows good enough to open into the hybrid model under these circumstances. My colleagues and I are here at the BPS because we love our students and families. We desperately want them to have what they need, but under this plan, those of us with compromised health, single-parent educators without children at home, with, without childcare at home, sorry, and those who have elderly family members living with them are being thrown under the bus. We need to get this right, that's true, so don't rush students and teachers into buildings that aren't ready for hybrid learning, when instead we should be working together to set up better remote structures and planning to prioritize help for students who need the most support. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniela, your audio cut out a little bit while you were testifying, so if you could please send your written comments to me by email, I'll share those with the committee.
Thank you very much. I will.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Badger. She'll be followed by Lindsay Eldridge and Sabrina Barroso. If you could all please raise your hands virtually on Zoom. Elizabeth Badger.
Hi, good evening. I'm, my name's Elizabeth Badger. I'm an attorney at the Pair Project. I have, I'm here tonight, and I was very grateful to participate in the working group that worked on this policy regarding student privacy. As someone who's worked with immigrant students for many years now, including many of whom were criminalized by reports from Boston School Police Officers, the process of drafting the policy has, I'm grateful for it. It's been very important. I think it involved a lot of education of all parties involved. I think that while BPS came to the table from like a privacy lens, many of the other folks involved, including myself, came to the table from a decriminalization lens, and the policy, you know, doesn't ultimately resolve our core concerns about overcriminalization of students. I think that we all recognize that overcriminalization of students, particularly black and brown students, is a problem. I also think that most of us who work with young people would agree that, you know, they're not bad kids, they're just bad decisions, and those bad decisions generally don't merit criminalization. I want to take a minute to reflect on the justifications that I've heard for some of the more contested areas of the policy. So we want to, we want to teach kids responsibility for their actions. We want to ensure that victims are protected, and we want to ensure safety and prevent future harm. And I think, again, that's, those are goals that we can all agree upon. I certainly agree with those goals, but I don't think that we've gone far enough in this policy to envision how we can accomplish those goals without involving BPD, which inherently means criminalization of students. And in my experience, it can also mean criminalization of victims. And, and I hear the district saying often, you know, we write reports to further those goals, and there can't be, there's sort of a, a lack of willingness to be responsible for what happens to the information once it goes to BPD. And that, I would, willful blindness is troubling. I, I also want the district to acknowledge that the goals that, you know, I've mentioned, particularly preventing harm, are by and large intervention and prevention, social work, and are not accomplished by policing. I want to offer solutions, but in the interest of time, I'll do that via written comments. I do want to point out that tracking ethnicity and race is really important. It's something that I think some people have come to the table saying, you know, we should keep that private, but actually, historically, by not tracking that, we lose, we lose track in our auditing of racial disparities, and I think that's something really important to capture when we're auditing this policy. And I just, the last point I want to make is, is my concern about prohibiting the sharing of school police observations in Section 5. You know, this is exactly the type of information in reporting that landed many students on ICE's radar, and the reality is, we still don't know how these observation reports were created, maintained, shared, or where they're now stored, and I, I don't see how we write a policy to address historical behavior if we don't know what that behavior was. And so there needs to be more transparency about the historical behavior, even if it makes us uncomfortable, because it will inform this process and also help students understand how they might have been affected. So I just, I want, I would, I would like the district to reflect on what we've learned in the past few years, that there's a destructive chain of events that we know to occur once information is shared, and take responsibility for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Badger. I apologize for that. My connection dropped, but I'm here. And our next speaker is Lindsay Eldridge, and she'll be followed by Sabrina Barroso and Karina Hamm.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Great, thank you. My name's Lindsay Eldridge, and I'm a 1st grade inclusion teacher at the Lee Academy. This moment is an emergency. Our actions will have implications for generations. First, I will begin by stating the obvious: BPS must terminate the sharing of the information of children with the Boston Police Department. Any continuance is the willful participation in the oppression of people of color. Similarly, the full reopening plan is still not available in multiple languages, thus shattering any facades that we have engaged all families in this process. I'm thrilled to see some of the improvements that have been made, but concerns expressed two weeks ago continue to stand: ventilation, furniture, inadequate custodial staffing. Students deserve windows that work, seats that are safe, and schools that are clean. Buildings cannot open until these measures are in place. The hopscotch plan is slated to be an inclusion disaster. Pre-pandemic, the one teacher, one para-model was not equitable for special education students. As the special education and general education teacher in my classroom, I deliver over 3,000 minutes of special education services per week while simultaneously serving my other 15 students. I do everything possible for my students, but my best is not good enough because I'm only one person doing the job of two people. Now this issue is multiplied. The collision of the inclusion model and the hopscotch plan results in no real way to even begin to meet the needs of students. I will be simultaneously teaching online, in person, keeping children safe from a deadly virus, and meeting the IEP minutes of students that are both in-person and remote? The hopscotch model means that my students will get less services, less individual attention, and no safety. We need a better plan for students in Group C. It cannot be, quote, "depending on the space available in their specific school buildings," end quote, because we know that the buildings are not equitable across the city. We need a plan. We need a decision. We will get back to you is not good enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sabrina Barroso.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Hello.
Hello?
Hello?
Go ahead, please.
Hello? Okay, thank you. My name is Sabrina Barroso. I'm a youth organizer with the Student Immigrant Movement. SIM is made up of immigrants, children of immigrants, and youth allies. We are young people who dream of a world where we can live with dignity and respect, with access to resources that are critical for our physical and mental well-being, personal development, and our stability. I come from a mixed-status family where the uncertainty of our future together is the norm, because we are constantly under threat of being separated because of immigration enforcement, otherwise known as ICE. When I learned that Boston School Police have been sharing information, surveilling youth, and making accusations about them, and that this has even led to the deportation of a young man in Eastie, my heart sang into my stomach. I remembered feeling sucked into a hole of uncertainty again, and imagining how many young people had been impacted by this, and no one knew their story, wondering why and how such a thing could happen without anyone knowing or being held accountable. I thought about where he was, honestly, and if he was okay. I still think about him, and I never forget his story, because that's the reason why I'm fighting here, so that his experience will never be relived by any other young people in Boston. We need the "Learn Without Fear" policy, because reporting information about youth to the BPD is an act of complicity to keeping the school-to-prison pipeline alive. I envision schools where youth will not be criminalized for normal behavior, where they will not be treated like threats for showing up to school, for having an attitude, or having an argument with someone. I'm angered, frustrated, and saddened to see that now BPS wants to pass a policy that still misses the mark. The language presented tonight has vague criteria for reporting, which is a big reason why this problem exists. It will allow student information to be shared with police over unofficial channels like phone or email, and families will still not be given interpreters or a list of legal support like we have advocated for. The mayor, the superintendent, and the school committee have an obligation to serve the young people of Boston. This problem has existed for years, and we are demanding for BPS to pass a policy that is equivalent, the same in strength and threshold that the "Learn Without Fear" policy upholds, and we will not accept any less. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Karina Hamm, followed by Christian DeLeon and Rowan Halpin. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Karina Hamm?
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so dear school committee members, my name is Karina Hamm, and I am the field organizer for the Student Immigrant Movement. I'm here today to voice my concerns for the policy presented today in regards to student information sharing. SIM Unafraid Educators and our partners are greatly passionate and determined to have a policy passed within BPS that will truly protect students, which is why you continue to hear us push back today to advocate for our "Learn Without Fear" policy. The policy presented today fails to meet the community's expectations yet again. We do thank you for your efforts and time put into create a policy that is much better than the first one presented back in April, but we feel as if the one created this time around continues to leave major key points out. The policy presented today does not require BPS to provide a translator or a list of lawyers and different resources families can use when discussing when the student's private information has been shared with law enforcement. I grew up always translating for my parents, and I continue to do so today for them and for my siblings. It is not fair to put a young person in the position of having to translate to their caretaker this type of information especially. Another concern in this policy will continue to allow school police officers to write BPD 1.1 reports about routine school discipline incidents with no oversight. These reports will continue to label students under broad categories that are vague and subjective. Young people have to face criminalization outside of schools. Why has it been so difficult to fight to protect them within school grounds at the very least? Once these reports are written, they're in the Boston Police Department system, and BPS has no way to access them. There are still too many loopholes that continue to perpetuate the dangers of mislabeling a young person as a gang member within these reports due to an arbitrary 10-point system. What about our "Learn Without Fear" policy is so hard to implement? Why are you not advocating just as hard or even more to protect students from being detained, imprisoned, and criminalized due to school reports on typical teen behavior that can be steered in a better direction for that student without the need of law enforcement involvement? We presented a strong policy to the superintendent and have had conversation with her since November of last year. Why has it been dragged out for this long? If our policy was adopted back in the beginning of the year, then we would not be having this conversation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamm.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christian DeLeon, followed by Rowan Halpin and Eli Harmon. Christian?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Christian DeLeon, and I am a member of the Student Immigrant Movement. I'm here to support the "Learn Without Fear" policy, because I see how young people are consistently criminalized in our streets and our schools. Schools should be a place where students learn and socialize. This is a place to grow academically and personally. They should not be worried about having their behaviors criminalized and seen through this perspective of law enforcement. BPS has created a better policy since the first one presented several months ago. We thank you for the time put, but we will still continue to advocate and push for a stronger policy, because our young people deserve to be heard, protected, and respected in schools. The policy presented today still lacks what the community has been fighting and advocating for. When I heard that the school police presence in schools led to students being taken to court for incidences that should have been dealt with in their schools, I felt that police presence in schools are now wrongfully being used to target minorities and immigrant students. This police work has been dragged on for too long, and yet we have been let down again with this new policy presented today. It leaves out major key points we at SIM have been advocating for. If the student community, if the community has advocated for the "Learn Without Fear" policy for so long now, why is there still hesitation to use that as the base and make it better, not worse? Again, my name is Christian, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Rowan Halpin. He'll be followed by Eli Harmon and Matthew Rigero.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Rowan Halpin, and I am a graduate of the Boston Public Schools. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my mother, Suzanne DiMarco, who has been a speech and language pathologist in the Boston Public Schools for 30 years. Last week, she asked the superintendent and school committee to wear masks during this entire meeting in solidarity with the students and staff, who are expected to wear them every day. Mr. O'Neill, I thank you for your efforts. The fact that not one other person was willing to make that small sacrifice shows our community a lot. It is undisputed that we need to do better for our educationally fragile children, but the reality, the plan to bring them back in person, puts them into a situation that is exponentially more dangerous than their Gen Ed schoolmates. This is what happened when we looked at real numbers. If we apply the hopscotch model to a Gen Ed class with one teacher, times twice a week, we get a base number of 24 points of contact. Let's look at the numbers from a substantially separate room we worked in. There are 12 Black and Brown students in this classroom from six neighborhoods in Boston. They all take school buses. They speak six different languages: Spanish, Haitian Creole, Patois, Bengali, Cape Verdean Creole, and Vietnamese. 12 kids times two teachers times four days a week brings them to 96 total points of exposure, compared to 24 points in the Gen Ed model. Next, we have to factor in the 11 service providers: ABA, bilingual speech, OT, ESL, and a teacher for the deaf. All of these providers work in multiple classrooms with a low average of five. We're now at 5,280 points of contact, and in 21 different schools. To review, a BPS Gen Ed student starts with 24 points of exposure. Students in this typical sub-separate classroom have 22,176 points of exposure. In-person instruction is failing across the country. Why do you think that Boston will be the exception? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Eli Harmon.
Thank you so much. My name is Eli Harmon. I'm a recent graduate of the John D. O'Brien School in Roxbury and a member of the Student Immigrant Movement. I'm testifying tonight in support of the "Learn Without Fear" policy proposed by the organizations Unafraid Educators and the Student Immigrant Movement. For too long, the Boston School Police have been allowed to abuse their power and write student incident reports unnecessarily and make them available to law enforcement, including agencies such as ICE and BRIC. This has put students disproportionately, students of color and undocumented students, along with their families, in completely unnecessary danger. What "Learn Without Fear" would do is very simply create clear criteria for what qualifies as an incident report that a school police officer can write up, ensure transparency and communication with the student whose information is being shared, as well as with their family, create a community oversight board to ensure that these new protocols are adhered to, and provide training for all school police and administrators on these protocols. While I do appreciate the superintendent and BPS for adopting some of the key elements of the "Learn Without Fear" policy into their new proposal, I would like to reiterate that the proposed policy does not go far enough. One aspect I take particular issue with is the fact that, under the BPS policy, school police officers will still be able to write BPD reports that can then be funneled into law enforcement agencies such as BRIC. This is problematic, because it allows reports to be written following extremely vague criteria, leading to the unnecessary criminalization of disproportionately undocumented students and students of color. The fact that BPS has always neglected to take up this exact policy has been much to the frustration of not only the people who work for these organizations, but of the well over 2,000 people who have signed a petition in support of this very basic set of regulations. This is a moral issue, and to pass anything less would send a message that BPS is prioritizing the ability of school police officers to abuse their power over the protection of students. I ask that the original "Learn Without Fear" policy be taken up, and that members of the school committee vote yes on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matthew Rigero, and he'll be followed by Clara Ruiz and Sarah Sherman-Stokes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Oh, thank you. Hello, my name is Matthew Rigero. I'm a teacher at Charleston High School. I'm a graduate of Boston Public Schools. And, you know, really, in a lot of ways, I feel like I've grown up in Boston Public Schools, both as a student and as a teacher. And I've been thinking a lot lately about how hard a lot of this is. I feel like, in addition to as hard as school and teaching and being a student and being a person in Boston can be a lot of the time, really, since March, it just hasn't stopped. You know, it's been hard from that moment on. And when summer hit, there wasn't really any break from that either. From that point on, it was figuring out how to imagine teaching during COVID, working together with families and students and teachers to try and push for a safe start to next year, where we keep people safe and we make sure that people's needs are being met. And it is really hard. Like, we're in a pandemic. It's hard. But I think also about... I have a teacher who said to me once that when things are really hard, that should also be a sign to you, that if something's really, really hard, it might mean that you're doing it wrong. And I think about that a lot with Boston Public Schools. And I think about public education generally, and the fact that we're told that, and I think we internalize that it's supposed to be hard. And I look at so many of the decisions that are being made by the district over years, whether it's school reopening in the fall, whether it's giving away of land, whether it's principal changes or student information policies. And it just always seems to be really, really hard. And to me, I think at a certain point, when it's so hard, when there's so much resistance, we ought to ask, why is it so hard? And I think a big part of that is the process we use. And I'll wrap up, I see my timer, but I just want to reference something that I know our US representative says, that people don't resist change. They resist when change is harmful. They resist change when it seems like it is done without them, and when it's done in a way that would be harmful to their community or to them.
Thank you, Mr. Rigero. If you could summarize, please. Thank you.
That is what I was trying to do there. Sorry. Yeah, I think we do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Clara Ruiz, followed by Sarah Sherman-Stokes and Annie Gonzalez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Clara Ruiz, and I'm a member of the Student Immigrant Movement. For years, the community have been trying to get answers to important questions about the role Boston School Police has been in having information sharing about students. There is proof that Boston School Police are criminalizing young people for normal teen behavior, like the young men in Eastie, where the incident description ended with, quote, "This incident will be also sent to the BRIC." I came to this country as an immigrant child and entered public school without knowing a word of English. I am horrified by some of the action Boston School Police is taking, particularly against immigrant families. The Boston... The year's month passed is not addressed monitoring, reporting, and training enough. The report labeled students under bribery, criminalization. Once these reports are written, they're in the Boston Police Department system. The BPS has no way to assess them, allowing the Boston School Police to think, but have no proof that the students might be involved in again. The BPS policy will not protect the student information from being shared with police over unofficial channels like phone or email. And to make it even worse, doesn't require BPS to provide a translator for families when the district is informing them that the private information on their child has been shared with law enforcement. Is this even like fair? There is a little to not reference about the involvement of families. This policy is not better. We need the "Learn Without Fear" policy to be adopted now, because children have a right to a safe school environment where they can learn to the best of their ability. As in, this policy matters to me, because it didn't take me long to discover that the students in my classes have learned how to be experts and how to be afraid. And such fearfulness has become such an accepted practice in school that it now seems to be a natural behavior. So natural is invisible to them, but not to me, because being an immigrant myself, I have witnessed plenty of unfairness in BPS. I refuse to be transferred with a parent or acting behind the parents. My ambition for our school is to have a place where they have equal access regardless of your immigration status. I see the timer. I'm about to be done. If you really want to commit to making the school safe and equal to all, if you really care about the students regardless of their immigration status, prove it. The first step is to adopt the "Learn Without Fear" policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruiz. Next, we'll hear from Sarah Sherman-Stokes, and she'll be followed by Annie Gonzalez and David Noels. If you could please raise your hands.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Sarah Sherman-Stokes, and I'm the Associate Director of the Immigrants Rights and Human Trafficking Program at Boston University School of Law, where I represent detainees and asylum seekers. I am also a BPS parent of two children, a rising student in K-1, and a first grader. Thank you to everyone who has worked on the student privacy policy. I'm here today to tell you a story about one of my clients, Nelson, whose case has been referenced by many. Nelson is now depressed and in danger in El Salvador, despite living his entire adolescence in the United States. Nelson was deported after an argument in a BPS high school cafeteria. Despite earlier testimony, what happened to Nelson would not be prohibited under this policy, and that is why I oppose this policy in its current form. When Nelson was a teenager, he got into an argument in a high school cafeteria, the same kind of argument that happens every day, many times, in cafeterias across this country. But because Nelson is Latinx and from El Salvador, this exchange between two teenagers was taken as a credible threat of a fight, an indicia of gang involvement, based on the second-hand rumor of another high school student. The school police officer then made a report that my client was a gang member. This incident report was shared with the BRIC, the Boston Regional Intelligence Center, and Nelson was flagged by ICE for deportation. Nelson spent over one year in an adult immigration jail, time that he should have spent in high school, earning his diploma. Instead, after many court hearings and appeals, Nelson grew so depressed that he finally gave up. He was suicidal, and he accepted his deportation to El Salvador, where he feared for his life. Under the policy as it stands today, the false accusations and information sharing that led to Nelson's deportation would still be permitted. This incident report could still be shared freely with BPD. Under Section 3A1, as others have mentioned, this mundane argument in a high school cafeteria could still generate a 1.1 report. And once that report is made, it would be shared with BPD and ICE. What Nelson and his peers need is intervention and prevention by trained social workers who can help adolescents navigate conflict in school. Instead, what this policy provides is the increasing criminalization of typical teenage behavior and a perpetuation of the wrong and racist belief that Black and Brown young people engaging in typical teenage behavior creates a presumption of gang involvement worthy of reporting to BPD and ICE. We know what it would take to keep our students safe. The "Learn Without Fear" approach proposed by SIM should be adopted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Annie Gonzalez, followed by David Noels and Tracy Curtin. Is Annie Gonzalez with us? But David Noels? Mr. Noels? Mr. Noels, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is David Noels. I'm with REIT Roxbury Environmental Empowerment Project, the youth program of ACE Alternatives for Community and Environment. I hope not to bore you. And please, please, please listen to these words. The fact that we trying to have a policy that says youth learn without fear. We need to really dwell on that and think about the times that we're living in and that a policy by SIM and by the way, shout out to SIM and we support that policy full way and all the work that they've been doing behind this. It's something that we should really dwell on and think about at, as people. No young person should have to be fear at school and the fact that we're still in a state that where police is needed at school, even when we're talking about a sure in and everything being safe and sanitized and we're still thinking about officers at school, whatever you try to rename it, we still know what the game is. Let's really think about that. Yes, we should support it, but the fact that we need that, we should really start thinking about the direction we're headed in since everybody is hashtag Black Lives Matter and Black Lives Matter at school and shout out to the BTU as well. Then let's start stepping in that direction. And since I already know you're going to cut my time at two minutes and not even asking me to summarize my stuff, I'm just going to summarize at that because I'm not even going to waste my Wednesday night. Let's stop having to have policies named like this. And let's start listening to the young people that's actually working with y'all to make this future great. Night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tracy Curtin and she'll be followed by Fatima Ahmad and Dania Barroso. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Tracy?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Great. Good evening, school committee members. My name is Tracy Curtin and I'm a third grade teacher at the PH Shaw Elementary School. I'm here tonight with my colleagues and the families of BPS students to continue to fight for a safe and fully funded reopening of the Boston Public Schools. We mean it when we say that we want nothing more than to be back in our classrooms with our students. I'm literally having dreams about it at night. However, we only want this when it's safe and equitable for all of our students, families and staff members. I want to acknowledge the powerful and peaceful action at the State House today, where educators, students and family members safely stood out to demand a safe reopening for our schools. I would like to raise up a few demands. It is unacceptable that teachers and schools need to individually fundraise for basic safety equipment such as air purifiers and plexiglass desks shields in order to trust that these materials will be in our classrooms to protect ourselves and our students if we're forced to open with a hybrid model. While the updated draft states that these materials will be given out as necessary, appropriate and available, it's clear that this does not mean that they are for all. These materials should be guaranteed. It is unacceptable that no additional funding is guaranteed for schools to create home learning material kits. Teachers should not need to pay out of pocket or crowdsource their friends and family for basic learning supplies. These materials should also be guaranteed. It is unacceptable that families, most specifically our most marginalized families who trust their children to the Boston Public Schools, feel that they're still in the dark about what level of safety their children will experience in September. It is equally unacceptable that during a global pandemic, we cannot yet assure that our undocumented students are safe and protected in our schools. I support the Unafraid Educators, Student Immigrant Movement and other advocates who are in support of the learn without fear policy. While the updated draft of the reopening plan makes some progress towards a safe and fully funded reopening, we must do better. Dr. Casilius, you have prided yourself on the time and energy you spend listening to our community. I do believe your listening is authentic. However, when I read this updated plan and learn that one window in my classroom is still considered a safe learning environment under this guidance, I lose trust in our leadership. We need to do better. The Boston Teachers Union reopening plan is more comprehensive, more digestible and significantly safer than the BPS reopening draft plan. I urge you to adopt this reopening plan, most specifically starting the year remotely and phasing in in-person learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fatima Ahmad, followed by Dania Barroso and Canal Ateen. Fatima?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, yes.
Great. I'm Fatima. I am the Executive Director of the Muslim Justice League. I was one of the participants in the working group that the school committee, you know, started to work on this policy and have been working alongside Student Immigrant Movement and Unafraid Educators in the ACLU on this. I won't go over, you know, everything that folks have already said because I think people have said so much about what is lacking in this policy. But I want to reiterate that this conversation was started by the community because of one, you know, really famous case that happened, right, in East Boston. But that, that means that there are so many unknown situations that have happened, unknown incidents that have happened to students. And to be pushing, you know, this policy that is so far from the actual learn without fear policy is really disappointing to me. As much as I appreciated being part of the working group, the reality is you all should have started with the learn without fear policy and actually seen how you could make that stronger, rather than starting with a separate policy that, that needed a ton of work and still needs work, as folks have, you know, clearly said again and again tonight. I will also say that, you know, Muslim Justice League, we are part of the bigger conversation in this city about the role of law enforcement in our communities and the need to limit and restrict how involved they are and how much they are policing our people, especially youth. And to, to see how much is going on with federal law enforcement around the country and to continue to prioritize sharing information with the Boston Police Department over the safety of our youth was also disappointing. I also hope that like Boston City Council, you all might consider actually having community experts as part of the beginning of the meeting, rather than having all community testimony at the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dania Barroso.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
My name is Dania Barroso. I'm 13 years old and I am a SIM member. Many people and families of BPS are frustrated because Boston School Police is sharing information about students without their consent. SIM, as well as many others, have acknowledged these issues and are trying to help with this situation. Teens are being punished just for acting their age and are even being falsely accused of gang members. I feel very strongly that BPS should provide translation for families that are a part of BPS who don't speak English or have trouble with it. Two of my closest friends' families do not speak English at all and it's a shame to know they wouldn't be informed at all of their child's situation. And that scares me. I speak Spanish and English at home. I would have a lot of trouble translating for my parents and no kid should have to deal with that. Parents should be informed about their own child's information. Families should also have help with possible lawyers, something even as simple as a list of lawyers' names. I hope to see the school committee use the learn without fear policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Canal Ateen. I don't see her in our speakers list, so if you could make sure that you're signed into Zoom with the name that you signed up with for public comment, Canal Ateen. So, LaCanto, I don't see our final speaker, so that would conclude our speakers for public comments.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to all the speakers for showing up this evening. I want to thank the folks that put the time to read the policy and listen to the presentation tonight and give us some measured feedback on where they see differences between the policy and what's been proposed. But for folks who came out and spoke tonight and didn't get a chance to listen to the presentation from the district this evening, I'd recommend you go back and listen to the presentation from earlier this evening, as well as take a look at what the draft policy looks like. Because I think you'll find that a number of the items that have been called out in some of the comments here, training among them, most frequently is what I heard, were, has been addressed in the draft policy. But in any case, as we mentioned earlier, we're going to be taking action on this at our next meeting. And so we'd invite you to send us your specific comments in writing between now and then, so we can understand a little bit more about your concerns. Move on now to our first action item this evening, which is grants for approval totaling $62,889,945. I'll now open it up to questions and comments for the committee, from the committee, excuse me. Looking around, looks like nothing. So if there's no further questions, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Thank you. That sounds like a motion from Ms. Robinson, a second from Mr. O'Neill. Any discussion or objection to that motion? Ms. Sullivan, may we please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The grants are approved unanimously.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan. Our next action item, we have two brief votes this evening. The first of which is the temporary suspension of the maximum age assignment enrollment policy. And you recall members that, that at our last meeting, very late at our last meeting, Mr. Manny Allen, the Director of the BPS Reengagement Center, Mr. Carlos Diaz, the School Services, excuse me, Coordinator of School Services for Adult Education, joined us to present the superintendent's recommendation that we temporarily suspend the district's maximum age assignment and enrollment policy in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. If approved, as a reminder, all students who will turn 21 years old on or before August 31st, 2020, will be permitted to remain enrolled in Boston Public Schools through the end of the 2021 school year or until graduation requirements are met, whichever occurs first. So, as just a reminder to the public, this is a pretty straightforward vote. This is another one of these policy-based amendments that we are making as a body on the recommendation of the superintendent and in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And for folks that have been longtime watchers of this issue and specifically the the issue around our alternative education schools and our students that are aging out at age 22 from the, the system. This is a issue that we've worked on for a number of years and we've worked very closely with the, the teacher leaders at the Boston Adult Technical Academy, who have led along with a number of other schools and teacher leaders in advocating for providing our, our support to these students. So I think this is, uh, this vote is about as easy as it gets for us and it's good to be providing a a bit of relief in this time of need for some of our most needy students. So at this time, I'll open it up to any final questions or comments from the committee. While looking around, see some shaking heads, I, I take that as a no. So with nothing further, I entertain a motion to approve the temporary suspension of the maximum age assignment and enrollment policy as presented. Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Sounds like a second from Ms. Robinson. Any discussion or objection to that motion? Ms. Sullivan, may we please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill? Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our final action item this evening is the superintendent's final performance evaluation rating for the school year 2019-2020. You'll recall that at our last meeting, Dr. Coleman presented a composite of the superintendent's performance evaluation with an overall rating of effective, which is a three on a four-point scale. Tonight, the committee will take action on that final performance rating. And after the new school year is underway, the committee will reconvene to finalize the superintendent's goals for the upcoming school year 2020 through 2021. At this time, we'd like to turn things over to Dr. Coleman if he has any final comments.
No, you know, all the work that people did and helping pull together the events and, and again, want to thank the superintendent for the wonderful, the excellent work she's doing in a very difficult situation. And then looking forward to kind of talking about how we're going to progress through the next year.
Well, thanks so much, Dr. Coleman, and thank you again. I can't say it enough for all the work. This is Yeoman's work pulling together all of this, these individual, these seven individual evaluation forms that each of us have contributed on, as well as the superintendent's self-evaluation and then compiling a further composite document. So we, we are in your debt for taking on all of that work and also in so doing, improving the process. So thank you once again, and I thank you on behalf of the, my fellow members of the committee. Members, are there any other further questions or concerns or comments that you'd like to make before we move to the vote? Mr. O'Neill?
First of all, I want to thank Dr. Coleman for his work on this. Hurting us all together to get the evaluations in time, do the work, putting the composite together, doing what I think is an excellent summary memo. So thank you, Dr. Coleman, and thank you, Dr. Casilius, for participating in this very public group canal. And, you know, it is a necessary part of the job and it is, as I talked about the last time, you know, a way to model behavior to show that, you know, we expect this process throughout the entire districts and our teachers undergo it from school leaders and so on and so forth. So it is part of the process. And when you're in the visible role, you get the visible evaluation. So thank you for your participation in that. I just want to make one comment, Dr. Coleman, and that is when we do work on the goals, I do note that you noted in the composite that a number of us made comments about, you know, the superintendent is doing many things great in her first year and we really do appreciate that. And then we made some suggestions on opportunities for increased focus in the second year. And a number of the comments were around the organization piece and, you know, setting up a senior team, an organizational structure that the superintendent's comfortable with and basically empowering the senior team to be five or six Dr. Casilius's out there. And so I do think it'll be worthwhile for us when we do, do the goal-setting discussion to incorporate that into the goal-setting discussion. And figure out a way to do that that achieves the objectives that were laid out, I think, by a majority of the members.
Yeah, no, I, that-
And I'm, that's in response to a question you had asked at the last meeting and it was pretty late at night, so not all of us may have picked up on it. But I just wanted to give you the feedback that I thought that would be worthwhile. But thank you for your overall work on this.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. And, and yes, I believe the intent with the goal is now is for us to get to a retreat after the school year begins and have a little bit more of an expansive conversation about what we intend to see in, in the district's performance and that of the superintendent over the next year. And I think we don't, I don't believe we're on a, a clock to, to get those goals done under the regulations, but we certainly want to get that done fairly expeditiously. So we'd like to do that before we get too deep into the fall.
Well, I agree with the approach of waiting till the school year starts because, you know, things are, the situations or value are adjusting so rapidly now that that certainly makes sense. But I also think to be fair to the superintendent, the sooner we have that conversation, the better because it's, it's fear for her to know what the goals are for the coming year. We should always, folks should always know, you know, what the measuring stick is going to be, even if it does adjust. But I agree completely with, let's get school open, let's keep our focus on that. And then find time early in the school year to have that conversation.
Members, other questions? Looks like Mr. Tran has his hand up.
Yes. So the next item that we are going to vote on is going to be the consensus on the rating of the superintendent's performance evaluation for the last year. Is that, is that true?
That's correct.
Okay. So just to state for the record, I remain steadfast in my own assessment of her, of her performance evaluation that I have given out, given all the difficulties and, and all the unforeseeable incidents and situations that occur during the school year. The concern that I raised in my mind is very minute comparing to the kind of effort and time that you have put in. So I, I just want to put on- effort and time that you have put in. So I, I just want to put on, to the record that I, I I remain very steadfast on my own evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tran. Other comments? Well, hearing none. Superintendent, thank you for bearing with us in this very public process, as Mr. O'Neill laid out. We haven't done one of these since 2017. But again, in large thanks to Dr. Coleman in working with you to revise this process and win down what was expected over this year and, and what we can start to expect for the coming year. We've come up with a evaluation, and I think this logic reflects, you know, what could be expected from you from this first year, particularly given everything that's happened. So I think it's a great weight off the shoulders, if nothing else, and certainly puts us on the right track and gives you plenty of reflection on where each of the seven of us see your performance to date and where we're going from this point forward. So I look forward to having further discussions with you about what we, we hope to be a very productive next school year, and I want to thank you for bearing with us. So if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion now to approve the superintendent's final performance evaluation rating and composite evaluation for the school year 2019-2020 as presented. Thank you, Vice Chair. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any discussion or objection to that motion? Ms. Sullivan, please call the roll.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Abstain.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Thank you. Five yeas, one abstention, one absent.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan. Move on now, and, oh, I'm sorry, superintendent. I shouldn't have moved on so quickly. I, I know we've asked you, and you know, this is obviously a a sensitive issue, the performance review that we've gone through a number of times now. And you've certainly given us your, your honest feedback, and, and we appreciate you for that. But I did want to stop and just make sure check to see if you had anything else you'd like to share with us before we move on.
No, I'm just very appreciative of the committee and of the support, and thank you, Mr. Tran, and also all of the rest of the committee for their individual reports, as well as their, the composite one, and thank you, Dr. Coleman, for shepherding the process and being so gracious. And I look forward to the work of the goals. It's going to be, hopefully, the goals aligned to the strategic agenda that we have forward, as well as, you know, some of the work, I think, around my team and the, the central office and the whole entire team. So just looking forward to that. So, thank you.
Well, thank you once again, Superintendent. Move on now to our final report this evening, which is a proposal for a connector system between UPK programs and BPS. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Jason Sacks, our executive director of early childhood, and Ms. Tiara Dias, our UPK director, to please present their report. Superintendent, do you have any introductory remarks?
I just want to thank the entire team for their incredible work. Mr. Sacks, for as many years, champion early childhood, as well as Ms. Robinson and her work on early childhood as well. I know they've been working on this policy for many, many years to get the pathways. We know that having pathways and certainty for parents is a, is a way to bring parents to the district and to cultivate trust, so they know what their students are going to be having and where they'll be going. So just really appreciative of the hard work that they've done to get this over the finish line. So thank you.
And thank you for having us. I appreciate it.
All right, Tiara, take it away.
Yes, I'm joined, as mentioned, by Jason Sacks and so on, behalf of our early childhood department. Thank you again, school committee, for having us. The community-based organization and BPS K2 connector system is a proposal to connect our UPK sites with our K2 classrooms. This would be
This would be for students enrolling in September 2020, and they would be eligible for the connector system next year in 2021. So just to give us a little context, we are, there are two types of K1 students that we serve in Boston. The first group is our BPS K1 students, our traditional students in the district who are automatically connected to their K5 and K8 experience. We serve about twenty-eight hundred students in the district. And then, as we begin to expand into the community, we now have our universal pre-K classrooms, where we serve about five hundred and forty children throughout Boston. Unfortunately, these students aren't given the same assurances as our BPS traditional K1 students in that they are not guaranteed their seat for the K5 or K8 experience. And as you can imagine, this results in high student turnover in our community-based organizations, as well as an inequity for our families who need the ten-hour, twelve-month day. In addition, I should say that our community partners are serving some of our earliest learners, as early as infants and even toddlers, before they come to Boston Public Schools. So, you know, whether a family is choosing a universal pre-K classroom in the community base or in the district, we want to make sure that we're, we have these compatible systems across settings, that we're minimizing transitions for families, that we're streamlining the registration process, and also making sure that we are maintaining families' choice. In addition, this UPK expansion plan is really aligned with the BPS strategic plan to both close the achievement gap, as well as set children up for success early. The research certainly tells us that children who are enrolled in our community base, our high-quality community base, have similar later outcomes as students enrolled in our BPS K1. And for both of our BPS K1 students, as well as the community-based students, they have better outcomes than children who do not attend any pre-K. So we use the BPS equity tool to help us identify invested stakeholders, and we made sure that we met and communicated with each one of them. The early childhood department surveyed families in really thinking about what influences family choice, as well, as well as gathering some historical data from our preschool expansion grant. We also spent a lot of time meeting with our community-based organizations through working groups, as well as our leadership meetings, to better understand their enrollment systems, as well as state and federal requirements that often impact something like a connector system. Then to work through the logistics of an actual connector system, and to make sure that it's aligned with our home base assignments, we worked very closely with the BPS Welcome Center and planning an analysis, probably about weekly, if not bi-weekly. And then for a broader community lens, we tapped into our UPK advisory committee. So that is a fifty-member group, including philanthropy business, higher education, and nonprofit organizations. But it also includes some of our leaders from the city and Boston Public Schools. And then finally, from the initial directive to build the connector system to the final design, the process, both the mayor and the superintendent have led the direction of our work. So this slide here highlights the demographics of the students we serve across all of our K1s. Seventy-five percent of our families in community base and seventy-two percent of our families in BPS K1 receive some sort of childcare subsidy or a head start funding. And when you're looking at the race and ethnicity breakdown, you'll see that forty-two percent of our families are black or African-American, and that's in our community base, and in BPS K1, that is thirty-three percent. This is followed by Latinx families in Boston Public Schools with forty-two percent in the district and twelve percent Latinx in community base. And I do want to note here that we estimate that this percentage, twelve percent for community base, is actually underestimated due to the way that the sites did or did not report the student race. To collect this data in the future, we're going to use the BPS race, racial self-identification form. We suspect that this percentage is low, because it's also capturing some of our Latinx families in this twenty-five other are multiracial. And just to drive that point a little bit more, we also identified that nineteen percent of all of our UPK students reported Spanish as their first language. So we, we believe that twelve percent is actually higher and are going to use the BPS racial self-identification form in the future. Just moving on to dual language, forty-five percent of our students in community base reported as dual-language learners, with the most common language being Spanish, then Vietnamese, Chinese, and Haitian Creole. And then forty-five percent of our BPS families do not have English as their primary language. Lastly, as planning to build this connector system, we looked at some historical data that we gathered from the preschool expansion grant. And so we estimate about seventy percent of the K1 students currently in our community-based programs will transition on to BPS. So the proposed connector system would create two new priorities in the BPS K2 lottery system. The first priority would be for low-income UPK K1 students in our community base. And the second priority would be for UPK K1 students who are not low-income in our UPK community-based sites. This is not a guaranteed connector. It's between the UPK programs and the school, but rather what it is, is a priority within the lottery system for children enrolled in these UPK seats. So if you look at the image on the left, this here highlights the process we use to identify the seats we could actually use in the district. The new priorities are limited to four hundred and fifty seats across thirty-three schools, and the four hundred and fifty seats were selected from schools that had ten or more K2 seats, with the maximum of fifty percent of these seats being held and selected for this priority. So in selecting the K2 schools for this connector system, we had two critical factors that impacted the specific schools, as well as the number of seats selected for the connector. First is that the K2 seats had to be in excess of the K1 seats within that school, so that children in that school transitioning up to K2 would have a seat. Secondly, we needed to consider the zip codes of our UPK children to make sure that we were following the BPS home base assignment. And I do just want to note why we're proposing to prioritize our low-income families. The UPK programs and community-based sites were really designed in part to serve the families who need the ten-hour, twelve-month day, twelve-month, rather, year day. And currently, our public schools only serve the one-eighty. So what we're finding is that low-income families are disproportionately choosing our community base to meet their working needs. The majority of our families in these UPK programs, about seventy-five percent, are low-income. And, you know, there is a portion of private-paying families. And since our community-based programs control enrollment, there was a concern that families could purchase their seat for a three-year-old, even though they would need to do this in the previous, in the previous year. So by prioritizing low-income families, this would minimize this issue, and BPS would monitor this in the future to make sure it doesn't become a challenge. So this slide here highlights the priority seats across neighborhoods in comparison to demand. As you can see, sixty-seven percent of the, of the schools selected for the connector are of high or medium demand. And so we're providing UPK families with access to more BPS schools that they want. The more popular and less popular schools are distributed across neighborhoods. So, for example, you can see that the schools with UPK priority seats, for example, in Matapan are in some of the most popular, as well as some of the least popular schools. And it's important that we're providing priority seats in popular schools in many neighborhoods, and not just the higher-income neighborhoods. Lastly, we've identified neighborhoods where BPS could make a quality enhancement investment. And so those would be our low-demand schools, and through universal pre-K and our mixed-delivery system, we're going to align our quality and supports across all settings. That's a big piece of our department's work next year. So some of the quality elements that we define in universal pre-K include the use of our BPS curriculum, NACI accreditation, which is a national standard, coaching and professional development. So this slide here highlights some of those quality elements in relation to our BPS K2s. You can see that this slideshow is here that the UPK students priority access to the majority of schools that are both accredited, as well as using our focus curriculum. And so how the connector will work is families who will attend our UPK community-based sites in their K1 year for this September, and then they will register for their K2 choice at the BPS Welcome Center. They will rank their choices from their home base list, including the choices where there are priority seats. Income and UPK status will be verified through the community base, and then verified again through Boston Public Schools. The BPS K2 assignment system will run the two priorities for these UPK students, and only students who attend the community base and the, and a UPK program will be eligible for the priority seats. Then all K students would be notified of their school assignments in the summer before K2 starts. So this connector also creates an opportunity for dual language, for a dual-language link early in communities. So we want to really think through the connection for dual-language learners, because this is more of a guaranteed seat as compared to a priority. So we're currently working with one of our, our universal pre-K programs to better understand what is required to build this dual-language guarantee. And information from that pilot will be used to present a further proposal related to dual-language programming, our future proposal, rather. So to summarize the impact, the expected impact, just looking at UPK families first, an eligible UPK student would rank one of these thirty-three schools, would be more likely to receive an assignment through this, through this connector than before, when it was, it's not in place. And low-income students would have the greatest priority, because, as noted prior, UPK students who have this high-quality experience in K1 aligned with K2 are set up for success in school and beyond. The expected impact on our BPS assignment system is that students would have priority over students who do not attend a UPK K1. All other priorities and assignment policies will remain in effect. This includes children already enrolled in the BPS school, which will have priority over the UPK students. And lastly, the expected impact on the BPS enrollment system is that this proposal does not change or take away seats from eligible students, because all, all students enrolled into K2, UPK or otherwise, will stay within the home base model. All UPK priority seats will go to families who are already eligible for that school. And in fact, we think enrollment will increase, our BPS K2 enrollment will increase, because more families from UPK sites will register for K2. So under this policy change, the school committee would decide on three topics. The first would be a yes-no to prioritize community-based K1 students, hence making available the four hundred and fifty seats across the proposed thirty-three schools. And some of the feedback we've gotten on this model, apologies, this is the slide here. Some of the feedback we've gotten on this model is that this would ensure less transitions for students. It would provide a greater opportunities for families, especially our low-income families and working families who need the full day, that this plan is, allows BPS to be responsive to community needs and to its strategic plan around equity and pathways for families. This is also great, more greater alignment to opportunities related to curriculum. And as mentioned before, we're hoping that will increase enrollment in BPS. Certainly, our longitudinal research has indicated that when families choose our BPS, UPKs, they stay longer in BPS. The second would be to prioritize low-income students only. And the feedback on this model is that it assures low-income families, approximately seventy-five percent, will have priority to schools of their choice, provided it's within one of those thirty-three schools. And the third would be to prioritize the remaining seats for non-low-income students. And the feedback on this model is that it incentivizes mixed-income classrooms and ensures that the connector is available for all students in UPK-funded community-based seats. So this here highlights So this here highlights the timeline for the connector rollout. As indicated, our community bases are open and have started to enroll. And so we're bumping right against their enrollment for this year. And if this connector proposal is approved, the department is prepared to move forward with public communications to both the community base as well as families. And then that would bring us into the registration time. The UPK students would go to register between February and April, and then be assigned to your schools in the summer and begin the first cohort of students in September of 2021. And I think that captures, yes, that captures everything. Thank you so much.
We didn't introduce ourselves. So anyways, I forgot to introduce Tiara Dais. She is the Universal Pre-K Director, and she works in the Department of Early Childhood. And I think Jerry, when we first presented this, said it's been a long time coming to connect the community-based programs with the public schools. And so we worked with Monica's enrollment team and really did a lot of work to, to make this work within a public school system and the school choice and the home-based system. So anyways, we're here to field all your questions. But I just wanted to introduce Tiara, who has done a lot of work on this.
Thanks.
Tiara is excellent and a great team member and has been championing this for, for a long time with Jason. And they're just, they've just done such a great job. And this is another lifting up of our strategic direction of activating partnerships with our CBOs here. And so very, very proud of the work.
Thank you.
Thanks Superintendent. Thanks, Ms. Dais. And thank you, Mr. Sacks, as well. We'll open it up now for members' questions and discussion. Ms. Dais, I'd wondered if you might be able to take the screen down?
Oh, sure.
So I can't see all the other members to see.
There we go.
So I think it might be, right. It might be appropriate for us to start with Ms. Robinson, since she spent so much time to these issues.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very excited about this presentation tonight. It has been at least five years. So some of our kids who would have been, who would have actually benefited from this are now in the fourth and fifth grade. So I am, I am very happy to see the, the presentation come back to us with all of the really thoughtful changes, so that this is a win-win on both sides. Really feel that they've dotted every i, crossed every t in terms of thinking through any of the issues that anybody could poke holes in, that somehow prioritizing our most vulnerable students, the majority of whom are in our district, with providing them with quality seats. And early options so families can keep their children in the programs that work best for them and not have to play hopscotch to get them into a school, to get a seat, when they really needed a different kind of experience for their kids. So really, really happy to see this work. And hope that everybody else sees the value of this and that we can move forward on one, because it has been in the making since the very beginning conversations about, you know, UPK in the community as well. So, yeah. Thank you for all of your work and persistence on all of this. Because it certainly has been.
For your leadership on it.
Yes. Not giving up.
Yes, thank you as well.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Other members? Well, I see the vice chair has her hand up, so let's go to her, Ms. Oliver Davila next.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for all the work that you all have been doing. I remember talking about this many years ago. I, I think it's, it's fantastic to include the, the CBOs. And I was just curious, and you might not have this information, but I remember we talked like five years ago, and I was wondering about the, how has like, how has our partnership with the community-based organizations, has it impacted at all the salaries of community-based organization staff? Has that like gone, gotten higher? And I remember vaguely that there were, there were some funders that were going to put some money towards increasing like the, the salary base.
Yes. Tiara, do you want me to start and then you can?
Sure, that'd be great.
So the Universal Preschool Model itself funds salaries to teach, for the teachers in the UPK model get the starting salary of a Boston Public School teacher. And we've been tracking those increases. So in, in, in the UPK participants, and that's something like 40-some-odd classrooms, those, those teachers have improved their salary. And also assistant teachers' salaries have gone up, because we make that available. And directors' corresponding salaries have gone up, because you can't pay a teacher if the director gets paid less than them. So this has had a large impact on community-based programs. And that affected, for the whole field, I think for us, it's also, you know, been an opportunity. For example, we partnered with UMass Boston to create graduate-level courses. And there's been a growth in bachelor degrees coming out of UMass Boston as well. So I think the whole field is getting lifted, and this has certainly been looked at as a model in Massachusetts and across country as far as a way to increase salaries. As far as tracking like the overall field in Massachusetts, in Boston in particular, if salaries gone up throughout community-based programs, I don't know the answer to that. And it'd be a good study to begin to look at like, what were salaries for infant toddler teachers? And was that impacted? Because in theory, it should lift other boats as, as programs have to pay salaries in order to keep their staff. But, but we don't have it for the total community impact. But we know for the community-based programs, there has been an impact.
Thank you. And I'm just wondering about the impact on students? If you're doing any kind of research around that, particularly with the community-based organizations, that I'm going to venture to say have a more diverse staff with much more language capacity? And what does that actually, you know, how does that translate to student performance?
So we've seen, you know, we've studied this fairly extensively. And basically, in community-based programs, you can get comparable quality as the public schools. What's harder is the maintenance of that quality, because turnover is higher. And so we have, you know, changed a lot of our strategies to make sure that we're working with the director of the program and working around stabilizing the community-based programs on many levels, around their organization, around the supports, comprehensive services, et cetera. So I think we're getting better at stabilizing community-based programs to maintain the quality of the program. And we did receive a grant from the Foundation for Child Development to actually look at the implementation of this, so that we can better understand under what conditions can community-based programs maintain the quality. When the quality is comparable to BPS, the outcomes are, are the same. And actually, the long-term outcomes are more dependent on BPS aligning its curriculum and instructional practices all the way through second grade. Otherwise, the, the outcomes you get begin to fade. And that's sort of where we sit in the national dialogue. So it's, it's incumbent on us to also maintain the quality. And then also to figure out in community-based programs, what are the barriers to maintaining the qualities?
Yeah, no, I mean.
And yes, do we have more diverse staff?
Yeah, yeah. No. I think, you know, taking a dive into that, it's, I'm, I'm sure it has a lot to do with, you know, the funding that you have to raise every year is very disparate for community-based organizations and all of that stuff. So I can relate to all those pressures. But anyway, I just want to say it's really great to see this work, and I am excited by it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Go back to Mr. O'Neill for a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And it's not a question, more of a comment. I'm delighted to see this moving forward. This has been hard work to get it to this phase. As Ms. Robinson just indicated to all of us, I harken back to former Chief of Education in the city, Ron Dorsey, who was really trying to clear away a lot of the cobwebs on this and highlight what the challenges were. And so this has been conversations that's going on for a few years, but it's a very thoughtful approach. And so I think in terms of what Ms. Robinson always says to us when she talks about her babies, the ones that are in Pre-K, right, that's her expression that she has taught all of us. So glad to see us moving forward on this.
It's clear. We work for the Superintendent and Jerry. It's clear on this one.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neill.
I would, I would like to appreciate the Superintendent.
I agree. I apologize, Superintendent. As this has been talked about for years, and it's happening because you pushed it forward. I've given you credit on that as well. But, you know, I, I'd wanted to make sure to mention Ms. Robinson and Chief Dorsey. But you're the one that's making it happen, Superintendent, so thank you for that as well.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. And, you know, as long as we're giving credit out, you know, I do want to look back to the person that originally funded this in, in Mayor Walsh. This has been work that he has taken on at Ms. Robinson's urging, pretty much since he stepped onto the campaign trail for the mayor's office in 2013. Certainly seeing the CBOs and Universal Pre-K grow over that time with seats both inside and outside of the district has come from, come from the top. And so we greatly appreciate having that support in doing this work. I have one question around the specific policy change or series of changes that you're asking from us, Ms. Dais and Mr. Sacks. So I, I'm not sure what the numbers of the slides are. I think it might be 11 and 12. You've got a series of three policy changes numbered out. You clarify for me, are you asking us to adopt one of those three or each of those three in sequence?
So the first, the first is to ask whether or not you want to prioritize UPK students. The second is a recommendation around low-income students. And then the third is, low-income students basically would take about, I'm giving you a number, but about 400 of the 450 spaces. And then the third one is of those remaining 50 spaces or so, do you want to then prioritize UPK in general? So it's sort of one and two are the most important, and you sort of grab the third. But just to, to be clear then, that you're also prioritizing all UPK. But it's really one and two is what we're asking, which is UPK and then a second priority for low-income. And third just clarifies that. So it's really one and two. Tiara, do I have that right?
Yes, except the third one does indicate that it's non-low-income. So this, the third one would cover all UPK students, whereas just number two would only capture the low-income.
One and three are sort of the same, yeah. Because one is just saying all 450 prioritize UPK, and then second, do you want to do low-income? And then if you didn't want to do like, if you only wanted to do low-income, then you would lose those 50 extra spaces. And that's why we've sort of put in third for you to consider.
Okay. So, so those 450 seats are drawn from these 33 schools. And the interesting thing that I found with the way that you approached it, which I think is a reasonable one, we're trying to, you know, distribute seats as equitably as we can across the schools that have open seats, is what happens when the demand for a school changes? So say a school has one of these 33 schools, or several of these 33 schools, increase their demand for students coming in from outside this CBO pipeline. And you suddenly have instead of, you know, 10, 12, 15 open seats, you may have, you know, five or six open seats over a multi-year period. Do we take them out of this pool? Do we? Before I suppose things, I assume you've probably thought this through, so let me stop.
Yeah. So the demand, the demand doesn't actually drive the open seats. It's the existence of a K1 and a K2. So in most of these programs, they have one K1 program or two K1, and corresponding two K2 and four K2. So meaning that, that the, the number 10 or more actually comes then they have an extra K2 classroom. It's not on the demands so much. The demand data that we showed you, just wanted to show you that they were equitable. We weren't just picking the under-demanded schools, that indeed actually some of the over-demanded schools or the demanded schools, for better words, are ones that also just have more K2s than they have K1s. So it's actually a function of, you know, if, if you changed it, it would be more like you added a K1 to one of those schools, and then we would take them out of, of it. But it's actually not driven by demand, but as capacity, if that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, that, that helps.
We can track the demand. But we should track the demand to see if changes. So like if, if for some example, least-popular schools get over-representative, we should come back and say there's something inequitable about that policy. But right now, it seems actually fairly equitable across low and high-demand schools.
Okay. Yeah, I think the interesting thing here is that, you know, parents are savvy, right? Parents are able to figure out, you know, where it is that within our system, our, you know, somewhat convoluted system, they can best figure out how to fit their, their stu, their kids within our, our classrooms. And so I think with this new avenue, I think we will see over time some, some changing demand statistics around each of these schools here. And so that's, I think in one sense that, that argues for, definitely for number two within your policy proposal, that, you know, we, we assure that no matter what, we're setting aside seats for students of very high need on the socioeconomic plane. But I think it will be interesting to see how this, this demand shakes out. Do you have any proposals that go along with the implementation here that would allow us to see, you know, say, the three-year experience out to maybe 2025 or so?
So I think the implementation research that we're getting from the Foundation for Child Development will allow us to, to look at some of the factors. And I think because this is so new, we'll just track it, frankly. And, you know, I think the experience with the Latinx reporting tells us that we need to do a better, a more sensitive job of understanding family reporting. And so I think that'll be influenced. I think what we hope honestly is that we see more demand in the community-based programs. They've, you know, BPS seats are filled at 96%. And in the community-based program, it takes a while to get them to fill up. And in part because parents are choosing the public schools first, because it guarantees them seats. So we're hoping that this levels the playing field, and there are no academic consequences to the choices a working family has to make. So we're hoping to see a rise in demand in community-based programs. And then, so we'll, we'll be tracking all of that.
Very good. You know, I'm sorry, Ms. Dais, do you have something?
Well, I was just going to say that as part of early childhood domination, we're also going to look at these low-demand schools and really think about how we can enhance quality, so that all of our schools, our schools that our family wants to go to.
Indeed.
So, yeah. And that's the NAYC and the Focus Curriculum. It's like we, we know that our BPS schools need to improve in their quality as well, to increase the demand there as well. So we want, we want them to be, you know, top-choice schools as well.
Exactly.
And, you know, really taking a step back there, I, I think this, this all fits within the idea that we want to, you know, create more consistent and appealing options across the entire district. And so, you know, one of the ways that we've begun to do that is to add six grades to K-5s, so that we have a less turbulent student population, particularly in those, those middle grades. And if you enhance the option that a, that a parent has or a family has for choosing a school that goes through sixth grade and creates one transition into a seven-to-12 model, that goes hand-in-hand with the other sort of enhancements that we're providing, with the expanded access to K to a pre-kindergarten seat or enhanced early education curriculum. And so I think, you know, a, as we begin to do all this work, we're, we're starting to stitch together a consistent framework that, that is reflective upon the work that has been happening over the, you know, last seven or eight years to, to try to make our systems more consistent. And we all know that, you know, once we have a more consistent student body within each one of these schools, that comes with it the resources that are provided through weighted student funding, the types of programs that can be afforded through those funding, that, that type of funding, and the type of resources that, again, you know, it's, it tends to be circular here, that create a more inviting school community for families to, to want to join. So we're glad to have this part of the process. So we will take an action. If there are no further questions or comments, we will take action on this at the next school committee meeting on September 16th. committee meeting on September 16th. And I did want to ask you just, if you wouldn't mind, I looked back in the materials and I may have missed it because we've had a lot of emails lately. Do you have a list of those 33 schools that would be the receiving schools for the 450 seats?
Yeah, we can give you that list.
If you would circulate that through a list, that would, Ms. Sullivan, excuse me, that would be appreciated.
Awesome.
All right. Well, thanks for staying with us at this relatively late hour, but not too late for school committee standards. And we'll look forward to seeing you next month.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you again. Move on now to public comment on reports, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. We have no speakers for public comments on reports.
Okay. Members, is, is there any new business?
I just.
Ms. Robinson, yes, please.
It's not really new business, but it's sort of a review of old business. I've asked about this before and it's come up a couple of times tonight about our issues around our policies and reviewing of our policies. And we've talked often that there are many policies that are governing this board that many of us aren't even aware of because we don't have any kind of policy book. And I know you've talked about our policies being loaded up on, onto the web at some point. Where are we in that process? And, and even in the process of getting them uploaded, what, we now need to go back through all of those policies and looking at them through an equity lens since we now have those tools to do it? So as we are, you know, I, I think often of this line that I heard yesterday was don't go back to managing inequality. How are we beginning to think about our own processes so that as our schools are trying to change their way of, of operating, that we are doing that for ourselves also?
Well, thank you very much for raising that, Ms. Robinson. And I don't want to put Ms. Sullivan on the spot, but Ms. Sullivan and Ms. Parvex in the school committee office have been working on this project over the past year in partnership with the Mass Association of School Committees. And for frequent committee watchers and as a refresher for the members, we did embark upon this project last year at the advice of folks both internally and externally. And we were able to set aside some school committee funds to accomplish this project. And so, Ms. Sullivan, is there anything you can share or maybe able to share after the meeting?
Sure, absolutely. I can provide an update. Essentially, Ms. Parvex has done a wonderful job digitizing all of our policies going back several years. And at the moment, our friends at Mass are sorting through all of it, putting it into their library system, and then they'll let us know whether there are any gaps or overlap.
And do they have an estimate on where we might be in the process or where we might expect a final library to be created?
Well, I will follow up with you on that.
Very good.
Thank you.
And I think to the other issue, Ms. Robinson, that you raised, I think there's definite merit to, once we do have a workable policy book, embarking on a project to review that policy book and call out areas of in need of review. I know we have a number of task forces around that might be able to help us out on that. So that might be an issue that we can talk about at a future retreat and thinking about how we parse out that work and.
Yeah.
Task forces to lend us.
Yeah, yes, yesterday, again, during the presentations of both Dr. Love and Dr. Kendi, they talked about the fact that we are a district that is dealing with several racist policies as we continue to do our work. So I feel it would behoove us, as we are working with our district to become anti-racist, that we take the time to go back and look into our own history. And there's also a wonderful set of podcasts that talk about the history of busing that is being brought back up that I feel, again, would be a wonderful thing for all of us to listen to so that we can understand the history of our predecessors, some of which we, that lingers on into what we're dealing with, but may, but it's well over time that we bit the bullet and began to try to get this stuff better aligned so that these new preschoolers that we're going to be bringing into BPS will really have a wonderful opportunity to be as successful as possible, so.
Thank you again, Ms. Robinson.
All righty.
That concludes our business for this evening, colleagues. The next school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, September 16th at 5:00 PM here on Zoom. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Yeah, I think you second yourself. There's no discussion or objection to the motion. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll and we'll vote ourselves out?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, and good night all, take care.
You're sir.
Ms. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you again, Ms. Sullivan. Thank you all. I hope you get some break time here before the Labor Day holidays and we'll continue to work towards our plan for reopening in the fall. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.